Miranda Maniscalco.
Here.
Hertek.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Vieira, Carlson and Clendenin.
Here.
We have a physical call.
Thank you. We are going to start with the consent agenda. Councilman Vieira is not with us. Councilman Miranda is absent today. So, Wito Maniscalco, you are the alternative. Would you please move items five through eighteen?
Public Safety Committee, so I move items five through eighteen.
We have a motion, Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Councilwoman Young, can you move items nineteen through thirty-one except for twenty-four and twenty-eight?
I move items nineteen through thirty-one except twenty-four and twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Young, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's see. Infrastructure Committee.
I move item.
Actually, so I had pulled item thirty-six and I have had all of my questions answered. I still think that eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend on this, but I am told we are going to have a great plan, so.
I move items thirty-two through thirty-six.
Thank you. We have a motion from Council. Thank you, Council. Councilman Vieira and Councilman Carlson has joined us. We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vieira. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Councilman Vieira, Councilman Miranda is absent. Could you please move items thirty-seven through thirty-nine?
Nope, nope, nope. Thirty-nine is pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thirty-seven through thirty-eight.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty through forty.
No, thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
I'm sorry. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, wait, hold on.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Vieira, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Councilman Carlson, could you move items forty through fifty-one?
So.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay.
I move items fifty-two and fifty-three.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to set the public hearings?
Set move.
We have.
Fifty-four, five.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco to set public hearings for items fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-six. A second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to open the eleven o'clock public hearings, please? We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from?
Vieira.
Councilman Vieira. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. The eleven o'clock public hearings are opened.
Just to our own.
Okay. Let's go with item number fifty-seven. Mr. Ingram?
Hi. This will be my presentation. Quinn Steele with the Planning Commission staff. Item number fifty-seven is the date to the capital improvement section scheduled projects in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. This replaces the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 capital improvement schedule of projects with the updated fiscal year 2026 through fiscal year 2030 schedule. The City Council approved this amendment upon first reading on October thirtieth and is back before you today for second reading consideration, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Ingram, did you want to speak on this issue?
No.
Your face keeps popping up really widescreen on my screen. Okay, there we go. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-seven? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close? We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Councilman Maniscalco, would you please read this one?
Yes. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance amending the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Section Scheduled Projects by replacing the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 Capital Improvement Section Scheduled Projects with the fiscal year 2026 through fiscal year 2030 Capital Improvement Section Scheduled Projects, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from? Councilman Vieira. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent.
Thank you. Item number fifty-eight. Steph?
Quinn Steele again, Planning Commission staff. Item number fifty-eight is file number TACPA-2509. This is a comprehensive plan map amendment to change the future land use designation for the property located at 2602 East Seventh Avenue and the associated parcels from light industrial and general mixed-use twenty-four, urban mixed-use sixty and community commercial thirty-five. The City Council approved this amendment upon first reading on October thirtieth and is back before you today for second reading consideration, and that concludes my presentation.
I'll go. Does the council have any questions? Hearing none. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-eight? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close? We have a motion closed, Councilman Maniscalco, a second from? Councilman Vieira. Please record your vote. Oh, we got to read it first. Councilwoman Hertek, would you please read this? Thank you. We're going backwards.
Yeah, that's me.
Just changing things up.
Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance amending the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at seventeen oh three North Twenty-Fourth Street, seventeen oh one North Twenty-Fifth Street, twenty-six oh two East Seventh Avenue, twenty-six twenty-three East Eighth Avenue, twenty-six twenty-two East Seventh Avenue, twenty-six twenty-four East Seventh Avenue, twenty-seven oh seven East Seventh Avenue, twenty-seven oh six East Seventh Avenue, twenty-six fifteen East Seventh Avenue, twenty-seven oh three East Seventh Avenue, twenty-seven oh seven East Seventh Avenue, twenty-seven oh five East Seventh Avenue, twenty-seven oh nine East Seventh Avenue, twenty-eight oh five East Seventh Avenue, twenty-eight oh five East Seventh Avenue Unit One Half, twenty-nine oh one East Seventh Avenue and twenty-nine fifteen East Seventh Avenue from light industrial LI and general mixed-use twenty-four GMU twenty-four to urban mixed-use sixty UMU sixty and community commercial thirty-five CC thirty-five, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now going to do quasi judicial, which means that everybody has to be sworn in. If you are here to speak on items fifty-nine or sixty, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand.
Yeah, yes, we'll do first.
Where offer that testimony that you're about to provide is the truth and not the bad truth?
Yes.
Okay, item sixty-one, there was an issue with how it was between first and second reading. They were supposed to provide a plan amendment was not submitted, so we need to continue this item. Can?
It cannot be continued till you open number sixty-one. Did you want to?
Move to open the eleven o'clock.
We already did.
We already did.
We open.
I heard fifty-nine and sixty.
Yeah.
No, no, we opened them all.
Yeah. Move to open all the.
No, we are. We.
We already did.
No, we already opened all the eleven o'clock public hearings.
No, eleven.
Eleven.
They were all eleven because it's still. It starts at eleven.
Shush you, shush you. So, can I? So, we need to continue item sixty-one, I believe. I believe it was December. What did we decide on that one? Do you remember?
Is there, is there staff present?
Is staff present for that one?
Yes. Good afternoon, Council and Chairman. This is Leo DeBarteleben from Development Coordination. Yeah, so the applicant and staff have agreed to December fourth for the second reading.
May I understand, is this the case where? Well, first of all, we have.
I have to abstain from this.
Okay.
Let me follow my form. AB.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to submit an abstention form from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vieira.
He has to state the reason.
Oh, the reason is because the petitioner here is my, is the landlord of my family's business. Different building, different side of town, but same landlord.
So, we have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vieira. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Councilman Maniscalco abstaining from this vote.
And Mr. Chairman, if we can, for the record, have the reason discussed, and I see the applicant's representative here, for the purpose of this continuance?
Susan Johnson.
Susan Johnson, the legal department. I think Mr. Barteleben can confirm, though. As you know, counsel, there's often revisions to be made between first and second reading to the site plan. And so, all the required revisions were not made and timely submitted, so that's the reason for the continuance.
Would you say, Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so can I get a motion to continue item sixty-one to December fourth? We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from? Councilman Vieira. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Clerk?
Motion carried unanimously with Carlson being absent at vote and Miranda being absent.
And what was the, it was a continuance, was it not?
Yes, continuance to December fourth, twenty twenty-five at ten o'clock AM in City Council Chambers, three one five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you.
And me abstaining.
Yeah. And Maniscalco abstaining.
Okay, so we're going to move to fifty-nine. You'll see that on the record, I was absent. I was actually in the chamber. I watched, I watched all of this, so I am prepared to vote FYI on item number fifty-nine. Fifty-nine, staff?
Hello again, Council and Chairman. Leo DeBarteleben, Development Coordination. Item number fifty-nine is AB two twenty-five fifteen for the property located at twenty-nine oh five North Fiftieth Street. The request is for alcoholic beverage sales, restaurant classification for beer, wine and liquor, consumption on premises only. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second readings. Those changes have been made. The plans have been certified and a copy has been provided to the clerk, and I'm available for any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Hearing none. Applicant? None. Has anybody in the room wished to speak to item number fifty-nine? Is that online? Okay. Applicant, do you have anything to add to the, to the item?
Good afternoon. No, I'm here to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? The applicant? Hearing none. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-nine? Fifty-nine? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close?
So.
We have a motion closed, Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vieira. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Councilwoman Young, would you please read item fifty-nine?
Yes, item fifty-nine filed. Item fifty-nine filed number AB two dash twenty-five dash fifteen. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance approving a special use permit SU dash two for alcohol beverage sales, restaurant consumption on premises only and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine and liquor on that certain lot, plot or tract of land located at twenty-nine oh five North Fiftieth Street, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Young, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Carlson being absent at vote and Miranda being absent.
Thank you. Item number sixty.
Thank you.
Your microphone's not on.
Sorry about that. Leo DeBarteleben, Development Coordination. Item number sixty is AB two twenty-five twenty for the property located at three forty East Davis Boulevard. The request for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue classification, beer and wine for consumption on premises only. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second readings. Those changes have been made. The plans have been certified and a copy has been provided to the clerk. I am available for any questions.
Does the council have any questions?
No.
No? Is there an applicant?
Alex Shaler, four hundred North Ashley Drive. I have nothing further to add. All of our information was covered at first reading, but I'm sure I'll speak to you all in just a few minutes. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item sixty? Okay. If there's multiple people, if you would line up against the wall. We'll call you up one at a time. Start with your name, and each individual will have three minutes. Thank you.
Ms. Zommerman has a speaker waiver form. Let me just see.
Oh.
One, two, three, four, five. Let's get those out. If your name is called, please acknowledge.
Mar, can you get the over?
Oh, oh, my goodness.
Yeah, do you have one for Bill? Okay. Okay, Ms. Zommerman. Start with your name.
Let me call some names.
Yeah.
Anna Murray?
Anna Murray.
Yeah.
Janice Davis. Thank you. Amy Ollor. Thank you. Paula Meckley. Thank you. Sandy Sanchez. Thank you. Carol Ann Bennett. Thank you. And Stephanie Pointer. Seven names plus three, total of ten minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, start with your name. You have ten minutes.
Is this on?
Yes. Well, CCTV, can you? We're seeing it. There you go.
Can you make it fit on the screen, please?
Yes, you, yes, you have. You have the wheel, if you want to see the whole thing.
Start the timer.
Okay, may I start?
Yes.
Debbie Zommerman, one ninety-two Corsica Street. I have been sworn. Let's start out by talking about the art of the steal. I refer to the Merriam-Webster definition of steal. As a transitive verb, one meaning is to take away by force or by unjust, unfair or dishonest means. Example, they are stealing our liberty. As a noun, it may mean a bargain. Example, it's a steal at that price. If you approve this request, you will be stealing the rights of residents are afforded via the clear language within the city's code. The flip side is, the applicant will be getting rights they are not entitled to, granting them a bargain. As I speak to you today, I am speaking as a Davis Island resident who has served on the board of Davis Island Civic Association, AKA DICA, for over fifteen years, many of which were in the capacity of zoning chair or vice chair. For close to two decades, DICA has continually requested nothing more than that the decisions follow the code. Land use decisions are not a popularity contest, but ones that should be based on the clear requirements outlined within the code and the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. DICA's position may not have been fully understood within the first reading. Specifically, DICA voted to oppose this request and with their, within their correspondence, they addressed distant separation waiver creates neighborhood intrusion. Two, potential for noise and extended late night activity. And three, precedent and long-term planning implications. Sorry, and there's the, I put the DICA letter in your package. You have heard a lot of testimony at the first reading. What you need to do now, before making any decision, is to review the record and determine what information constitutes competent substantial evidence. While there are a lot of opinions and speculation, I am particularly concerned that the testimony of Scott DeFradis, a resident within the notice area who is also a resident, a registered nurse, was not given due consideration. Mr. DeFradis gave direct testimony regarding the potential adverse health impacts if this item is approved. As the applicant failed to provide any competent substantial evidence regarding the health or safety implications, it's only reasonable to conclude that they failed to meet this burden as required pursuant to section twenty-seven, one twenty-nine A dash one. Keep in mind, per the site plan, this request is for a small restaurant plus or minus one thousand seven hundred and forty-three square feet with a proposed occupancy class group A with less than fifty occupants, Florida Building Code three oh three point one one. Now, returning to the code and the proposed ordinances, within section twenty-seven, one twenty-six, the intent is that special use permits have safeguards as reasonably necessary for the protection of public interest generally and of adjacent properties, the neighborhood and the city as a whole. Within section twenty-seven dash one twenty-seven, it is intended that S two special use permits be required where specific uses or occupancies involve matters of citywide or area-wide importance. The language of twenty-seven, one twenty-seven is addressed with it in the first whereas of the proposed ordinance. It's right here. Which states, "Request for certain specified uses and occupancies involving matters deemed to be of citywide or area-wide importance must be submitted to the City Council for consideration and approval as a special use permit S two." I did a pretty thorough review of the record and cannot find a single comment or reference establishing that this request met the criteria of being of citywide or area-wide importance. To the contrary, I did find testimony from a council member saying that this request was very, very modest as more fully documented within tab four of the binder I provided. Absent the finding of area-wide or citywide importance, it would seem the requirements of the code and the whereas contained in the proposed ordinance are unsubstantiated. Absent these findings, the record is unclear as to whether the requirements of the code or the whereas clause specifically stated in the proposed ordinance have actually been met. I respectfully request that these specific findings be introduced into the record prior to a final vote on this matter. Within tab six, you will find email correspondence entered into the record addressing the fact that the scope of the one hundred and nine parking space waiver for a restaurant with a maximum occupancy of forty-four persons was not adequately addressed within the first reading. The applicant was well aware that parking waiver would be required long before the meeting. A parking waiver of this significance is just too substantial to slip in as a minor revision between first and second reading. I have prepared a motion helper that may assist with making this decision. Please seriously consider these suggested motions, and if you have any questions, please ask me to clarify. I have spent a tremendous amount of time reviewing this record and submitting correspondence that outlines deficiencies with this application. I respectfully request denial of AB two dash twenty-five dash twenty. It is inconsistent with the land development code, has no demonstrated citywide or area-wide importance as required by the code and stated in the proposed ordinance. It contains no competent substantial evidence to justify the approval. It's incompatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood, and it steals the rights and protections residents are provided within the code. I believe the evidence I have submitted into the record substantiates the above comments. Again, if you ask, if you have questions, I will gladly walk you through the material. Additionally, if the applicant submits new information during rebuttal, I respectfully request that I have the opportunity to address new comments or evidence. A final point of significant importance per twenty-seven and one twenty-nine A is, it is the responsibility of the applicant to present evidence in the form of testimony, exhibits, documents, models, plans and the like to support the approval of such permit. As the applicant failed to present such evidence, I again request denial of AB twenty-five twenty. Thank you so much for your consideration of these comments and your, I know all of you are reviewing the documents, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello again. My name is Pamela Teon Colker. I live at six fourteen Superior Avenue on Davis Islands. I've been on the Davis Island Civic Association Board, AKA DICA, twice. Once about over a decade ago and for the past three years. I am here to oppose AB two dash twenty-five dash twenty, the special use application for three forty East Davis Boulevard. When I was on the DICA board the first time, a special use request was given for the building that houses Bank OzK, which happens to be the northernmost building in Davis Island business district. And DICA and the residents were successful. And DICA and the residents were successful in getting that alcohol request denied because it was the closest to the northern end of, and next to residential areas, and i.e. the 250-foot separation. 340 East Davis is, happens to be the furthest south building in the Davis Island Business District, putting it, again, closest to the residential areas, including where they're requesting to have alcohol be open, which is in their parking lot, which is right up to the street of where the residential area is. An ice cream parlor would be nice, a nice family place where kids could go and have ice cream and, and me as well. I don't agree that there's any reason that they need to put alcohol in an ice cream parlor, especially being able to drink outside in what is now the parking lot, because we know people who are drinking generally tend to get noisy and loud. Because it is right next to the residential area, I request that you deny this alcohol request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rich Garnick. I've been a resident of Davis Island since 92. I came from Chicago, so I know a little bit about crowding. I know a little bit about crime, too. I know a little bit about drinking. I used to work in an ER, and I used to see a lot of people that had injuries because of alcohol abuse. I'm not saying that all people abuse alcohol, but there is that potential. So I am strongly opposed against this. I find it outrageous that people here actually believe that Davis Islands can benefit from another place that serves alcohol. Davis Island has needs, like maybe stormwater drainage, maybe some better lighting, a lot of other things, but there is no need for another place to serve alcohol. I strongly oppose that. It is just too close to the people that live there. I mean, they're just like a few feet away from residents. And I find that outrageous, that people really believe that we could benefit from another place that we can serve. When I heard that there was going to be a ice cream shop, I thought that that was great, it's going to be wonderful, finally, you know, I can get some ice cream, right? But no, I don't want to be next to a drunk, you know, with my grandkids, and having to explain to my grandkids maybe why that person is acting that, that way. You know, like we have Anchor Bar there, we have many places that you can get even packaged liquor on, on this place that I thought was a paradise when I first moved, moved down here. And to actually consider that we're, we're turning into a Soho area, maybe even an Ebor Strip, is just ludicrous, and it's just preposterous. I just don't see any benefit. Yes, ice cream. No to the alcohol. There is no point, no rhyme, rhyme or reason. I also heard rumors that there's going to be some other things going on outside there, too. I drove by Davis Island, the downtown area, I think November 4th. There was like a rave party out, out in front of 220 and 28218. It was appalling. This, this little paradise was kids-friendly, family friendly. We used to go to have pizzas there, you know, enjoy the ballpark, enjoy many of the activities there. And to add another place is just, I just don't understand it. So I strongly oppose that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
So, approach whatever area. Here is some documents. And I can go over all of them.
Okay, start with your name.
Oh, and then this, too. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, a speaker waiver form. Please acknowledge your presence. One name, Susan Gullidge. Thank you. Four minutes, please. Thank you. Start with your name, you have four minutes.
Okay, hi, guys. I'm Scott DeFradis, 410 East Davis. I was speaking on the 30th as well. I've worked as a, 32 years as a registered nurse. I'd be happy to, resume upon request at Tampa General Hospital, specializing in trauma, burn, ICU, emergency care, and education. I'm also a teaching instructor at Hillsborough College for over a decade, and I strongly oppose this based on health and other reasons. So, I want to clarify and also apologize if I didn't make my concerns more vocal, especially on behalf of all the residents that live within 250 feet. The people that live in 250 feet did speak. Jerry Green, Pat Green, also my wife, Jamie DeFradis. Mark Taylor also signed the application. I've got to find that, and then I'll show it to you in a second. But those are the people that are directly, directly and taken by this proposal. They are within the 250 feet. So, I want to make sure that the location currently is designated, is not designated as a wet zone. And the surrounding block includes family-oriented service-based businesses such as TNL Nails, Duckweed Urban Grocery, and Wag the Dog. So introducing alcohol services into this environment and within 39 feet of residential homes is incompatible to the character and the need of the neighborhood. One waiver would reduce the required residential buffer from 250 feet, 250 feet to just 39 feet. That's an 84% reduction. The place's alcohol service is virtually in someone's backyard, mine and the other five people that I told you about. As a certified board registered nurse with decades of experience in acute care, I can attest to serious health consequences and chronic sleep disruption and stress. These are not abstract concerns. They are well-documented contributors to cardiovascular disease, mental health decline, and a weakened immune function. The proximity of this alcohol service to residential homes introduces noise, traffic, late-night disturbances, and directly threatens the well-being of nearby families. This is a public health issue as much as a zoning one. I'd like to refer now to this up on the board, right here on the Elmo, if you can go ahead and hit that, and then I put that in your packet. These are reasons I've got to convince, I guess, three of you guys, why this is not a good idea. Yes to ice cream, but no to these things. Health reasons, right there. We've got late-night activity, related disturbances, can disrupt sleep. I can agree to that. Increases stress for nearby residents. Zoning violations, requested waivers. Undermine the intent of Tampa's zoning code, which protects residential buffers. That's what this is. It's a buffer between the existing places and the residential areas. Community opposition. I, also in your packet, you have over 89 Tampa-area residents signed a petition in just one week opposing. This is with change.org. And then also 50 of those residents are from Davis Island. So to say that this is a situation where you have so much support, that's not the case. Don't do this. Misrepresentation, this isn't, if this is an ice cream shop, alcohol service is, is unnecessary, misleading to the public. And then you also have some more information in your packet. That's four minutes?
You've got 30 seconds left.
Okay, yeah. So I just want to make sure that we are not against ice cream. We are against alcohol creeping into spaces meant for families and quiet living. Please reject this application. Protect the health and safety and character of our neighborhood, especially for those who live within 250 feet of the buffer that was created by this board, City Council, in the past. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, City Council members. I'm Gary Brown, I'm a, and I have been sworn. I'm a 42-year resident of Davis Islands, and I've served on the VRB and the DI stewardship committee, both for eight years. I mention this because I bring a different perspective of what this application means to Davis Islands. I'm not just some old, longtime resident who's opposed to change. I'm an owner of 404 East Davis Boulevard, the closest single-family property to the applicant, just 60 feet away, across Chesapeake Avenue to the south. I was out of town at the first reading of this application, so I'm here to state my opposition to the three requested waivers. Reducing the separation of beer and wine locations, there are already eight different places to purchase beer and wine within the two blocks of the village. Do we really need one more? Reducing the required parking by 95% for what is now a greatly expanded service area of over 4,500 square feet, mostly outside. Just doesn't make sense, does it? The applicant could use that outdoor space for onsite parking, but instead installed turf to increase the allowable serving area. Why is this okay when it's been known that parking has been a problem in the village for decades? Reducing the separation buffer to nearby single-family to just 39 feet. This location is on the southern edge of the village abutting single-family residences. Maybe the standard for the current distance is excessive in the minds of City Council today, but this separation is in the code for a reason, which you've already heard about. I don't believe that anyone who has previously spoken in favor of this application actually lives within 1,000 feet of it. I'm all in favor of a successful business such as the ice cream shop. This request appears to me that the owner of this property is hedging his bet that if the ice cream shop fails, he'll still have the beer and wine license to perhaps open a different kind of business in the future without permission. I respectfully request that you deny this.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to speak to this item? Applicant, would you like a rebuttal?
Alex Shaler, 400 North Ashley Drive. Bear with me, I have a couple of different points that I want to address that were just raised in public comment. The first one, I think there was some speculation and maybe some binder handouts about this not being a complete application. Staff has complete discretion to set these applications for City Council. They're not automatically put on an agenda, so I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. And the second point I wanted to note is in regards to parking. There were some comments made about the fact that this was not addressed at first reading. This is the exact slide from the October 30th presentation, in which I said that we are, the outdoor space is driving up the parking requirement, and thus we're required a pretty substantial waiver. I think we discussed that in detail. I think that was understood, why that waiver is there. If somebody was drinking a Sprite or Coke out there, we would not have to park them, but because this is an alcohol application, we have to count them as occupancy in the backyard area. The backyard's around 3,000 square feet. That's the size of my backyard at home, so it's not, not a large space. The next point I wanted to note was in regards, I think there was some talk about the distance waiver. That's noted code section compliance. In case it wasn't clear at the first reading, I wanted you all to have a copy of that. And then there was a comment made about precedent setting. This was also shown at the first reading as well. This site is commercially zoned, so this isn't going to set a precedent that alcohol is going to extend further into the district, going to extend further into residential areas. The site is commercially zoned. And again, these hours correspond to alcohol sales. Somebody could operate an establishment there doing, you know, any other commercial allowed use for, until all hours of the morning, if they wanted to. This is specifically related to alcohol sales. And that brings me to my next point, which is that, and we discussed this at first reading as well, there's a lot of talk about, and in the letters submitted, adhere to the code, adhere to the code, there shouldn't be waivers to the code. The code allows you to sell alcohol until 3 a.m. So that's why those specific protections are in place. Of course, you don't want somebody drinking alcohol until 3 a.m. next to your residential property. I understand that. And that's exactly why we have taken the liberty to make commitments to this, this proposal. Again, we are proposing to end alcohol sales at 9:00 on the weekdays and at 10:00 on the weekends. I'm going to quote Chairman Clundon, and again, I know he's already been quoted once, he's going to get quoted again, that this is a very modest application. And that is why those, that goes in tandem with the waiver request. If we were seeking 3 a.m. hours, this wouldn't be happening. We would not be here. Again, we feel that the limited hours, the commitment to no outdoor amplified sound, that is what makes that waiver viable and what makes this blendable with the residential community. There were some concerns, and I know this has been, been mentioned before, about this becoming South Howard. If we judged every application with the fear that the neighborhood would become South Howard, nobody would be drinking at any establishments anywhere. I mean, you all have approved, you know, bars and restaurants within Palmasia and within different neighborhoods around the city, and people love those. People love a place to go grab a drink. That doesn't mean that some neighborhood's going to become South Howard because we allow alcohol sales until 9:00 p.m. at night. It's not, that is not a direct correlation. My last and vital point is I did want to reiterate that nothing has changed from October 30th, nothing. We had a waiver that we were required to include on the plan that wasn't specifically on the plan, but was robustly discussed at this first reading. That is the only difference, and we made all the required site plan changes, which were adopted in the motion to be made between readings. There is no new information here. We have made no other changes. This is exactly the same. What has changed between October 30th and today is extreme online fear-mongering via Nextdoor and people rallying the troops to come show up here. Our supporters unfortunately worked during the day, could not make it to the second reading, but I think you all heard how excited a lot of the neighborhood is about this establishment. So I'm happy to answer any questions. If you need any other clarification on anything, please tell me now.
Councilwoman, hear that.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, no amplified sound is on the site plan.
That's correct.
Staff. I think Mr. DeBart.
Leo DeBart, Living Development Coordination. Yes, Councilwoman, that, those changes have been made and that note is on the site.
Thank you. Is no chairs and tables on the site plan? In the outdoor area?
I think that might have been confused with the other, the 220 application.
Yeah, that, that wasn't discussed during the meeting.
Yeah, that was 220.
Oh, okay. I, I could have sworn it was both.
It was just 220 because we're counting this as parking in the outdoor area, and on 220 we weren't. So we couldn't have service out there.
So there will be, but that's the whole.
But there's no, no, there's no tables and chairs. Children's play area, outside. We have committed to no alcohol service outside.
Okay.
So you could get a drink and walk out back there, but you can't purchase a drink back there.
I don't know what that was.
I don't either. Okay, so, and then the final question I have is, on the site plan, does it say it's open between, till 9:00 p.m. on Monday through Wednesday, and 10:00 p.m. Thursday through Sunday? Or is it just alcohol sales?
It has hours of operation, too, because we clarified this because before it was just governed AV sales, but recently staff has asked that we include the hours of operations.
Okay, so, so on the site plan, the hours of operation are... Oh, we can, go to the wolf.
On the very top.
There we go. Yeah, the little wheel.
On the very, very top.
Very top, yep.
You guys know I like my digital presentations. I don't want to use these.
You go in old school.
I know.
We're not going to be able to read that.
Yeah. Can you see that?
The wolf has really great lenses, okay.
I can share my screens, that, Council.
Actually, you can see it. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Can you put that back, because we can't?
We're not speed readers.
Yeah, we're not speed readers.
There we go.
Monday through Wednesday, 10:00 p.m., and then 11:00 p.m. Thursday through Sunday, hours of operation.
Hours of operation, okay.
Outdoor amplified sound is prohibited.
It's prohibited. Okay, thank you. Appreciate. Does the measure?
Councilwoman Scott.
So I'm thinking a lot about this because we got a lot of information. And I love ice cream. I eat ice cream every day. And Tampa needs more ice cream shops, so that, you know, that, that's, that's great. So when I saw this, I said, great, you know, another place that I can visit. Because again, you know, I try to, especially if it's...
Questions. We're not pontificating yet because it's not closed. So just questions.
Okay, if this business fails, and I hope it doesn't fail, I don't wish any failure in anything, what happens then with the, the limitations that we have on the serving of, or the sales of alcohol? I see 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock, 9:00 on the weekdays and 10:00 on the weekends. If this business goes under, and then a restaurant wants to come in, do they come before us again and say, well, you know, we want to serve till 1:00 o'clock or 12:00 o'clock? If it's a different establishment in the future, since the alcohol goes with the land, what happens? Does it reset? What happens?
Susan Johnson, the lady, Councilman, you're correct. The alcohol approval does go with the land, so the, the special use permit is for a small venue, but the specific use is a restaurant. So I know we keep talking about an ice cream shop, but it's a restaurant, which is the use that you would be approving if you approve this. So it doesn't ever have to be an ice cream shop. It could be a restaurant tomorrow, because that's the use that they're requesting. So I understand that, you know, again, everybody keeps saying ice cream shop, but it is, a restaurant would be the, the approval.
But the hours remain.
The hours of operation would stay the same unless someone came in to try to change them.
So if another...
Restaurant came in.
Restaurant came in, they are going to be subject to the 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock weekdays, weekends.
Correct. Correct. Whatever's on that site plan is part of your approval.
Okay, so there's no outdoor patio furniture. Is it just going to be an open turf space? What, what is it going to look like? Because I saw in one of the renderings, there's one person standing there, and it was like seven and a half square feet per person kind of thing, but what is it going to be out there? What are they going to do?
What we're intending to put out there is like a children's play area, like a jungle gym, kind of monkey bar, stuff like that, but we just wanted parents to be able to go check on their children while holding the beverage. It's not really intended to be used as like some outdoor gathering space. It's intended to be used for children to play, but we don't want it to be like that lodge situation where it's like, whoa, 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 you can't cross this line while we are holding a drink. I mean, that's, that was the intent. And then Ms. Omerman did bring to my attention that I misspoke on the hours. I think those were intended to be changed between readings, but the site plan still shows the ten PM weekday, eleven PM weekend. If that is an issue for people and we're, we're really set on the sign and ten, we're happy to do this, repeat first reading, change those on the site plan, make any other commitments we need to make, and repeat second reading. We're more than, I apologize for that. I thought that was fixed between readings, so.
Okay, some clarity, some clarity, will it actually exist on the site plan?
Can we put it up?
Yeah. I think the site plan says.
And this is what the staff has?
Ten and eleven, and we intended for it to be nine and ten, so we're happy to revise that, like I said. Open this as a first reading, revise that. We completely intended for it to be nine and ten. I think it just, this must have gotten missed.
Staff, is this the, is this the site plan that you have, that we have, or do we know?
Leo, do you have? I think I printed the latest one. I think this is it.
Yeah, Leo DeBart, Leaven Development Coordination. Yeah, that, that's the copy of the, the latest iteration of the site plan that we have.
To get the original intended hours, we'd need to go back and have another, another first.
This would.
This would be the first reading, and then we have another second.
Change between first and another.
Yeah, another change to change, okay, got it. Anything else? Any council have any other questions? Councilwoman Hurtig?
So if we are going to go to first reading again, can we get a commitment to no chairs and tables?
Sure.
Can we add that to the site?
Hundred percent, we're happy to add that, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Shelby, how would we like to deal with this one? Get a motion to continue the item or?
No, we need to read like a first.
I'm sorry, read it like a first reading?
Make ordinance being presented for first reading, and then read the title, and then make the changes that you want to have accomplished between first and second reading.
So Councilman Vera, did you, did you copy those change requests, the change of the hours and no outdoor furniture? Now, Councilman Vera, when you're ready, would you read this as a first reading, please?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, Councilman Vera, second from, Councilman Metacocko, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shelby.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I hereby read an ordinance presented for second reading adoption ordinance first.
First reading.
I'm sorry, long day, long week, long year. I hereby read an ordinance presented for first reading and adoption. Thank you for that, Council.
No, first reading consideration.
Yeah.
Sorry, my bad, my bad. For first reading, I'll end it there. An ordinance approving a special use permit, SU two, for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue, consumption on premises only, making lawful the sale of beer and wine at or from the certain plot lot, tract of land located at three, four, zero, East Davis Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date with hours of operation and outdoor furniture notations included therein.
Between first and second reading.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so hours of operation, nine PM, Monday through, through Wednesday, and ten PM Thursday through Sunday, and no chairs and tables or outdoor furniture on-site plan.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Vera, second from?
Second, can I discuss?
Councilman Metacocko.
May I pontificate?
Yes.
You may pontificate.
The words of twenty twenty-five are slow roll and pontificate, and the most used.
Hey, I have both of those.
So I'm seconding this. We take it back to first reading consideration because of these changes. But when I looked at the map, this is the last commercial property before residential. I didn't think about this. I thought, you know, this is the Davis Island Commercial District, so there's a house across the street, there's apartments in the back, and, and then if you look over further north, there's Molly Malone's and Anchor Bar, you know, which are full liquor, right? Not too far away. But this is the last commercial property before you get into the neighborhood, so, you know, we're going to take it back to first reading consideration, but I'm going to think about this further, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Please record your vote.
Oh, no, we need to, we need a voice vote because it's first reading.
Oh, first reading now, that's right, yeah.
Vera?
Yes.
Carlson's absent, Miranda's absent, Metacocko?
Yes.
Hurtig?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
And Clendenin?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Carlson being absent at vote and Miranda being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on December fourth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five at ten o'clock AM in City Council Chambers, three, one, five, East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three, three, six, zero, two.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to open the one-thirty public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Metacocko, second from Councilwoman Hurtig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, eyes have it. Okay, item number sixty-five. No, I, I wouldn't, we need to dispose of item sixty-five.
I would do withdraw.
Okay, we have a motion to withdraw item sixty-five from Councilman Metacocko, second from? Second from Councilwoman Hurtig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, eyes have it unanimously. Item sixty-five is withdrawn. Okay, item number sixty-two.
Good afternoon, Councilor Cotton Development Coordination. We have a PowerPoint that's revised from the one that was presented to, was uploaded into OnBase with Dana helped, and she split it into the, into sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four, all on the same PowerPoint. I do have a question for Council, since you have a long agenda still ahead. Want me to just charge through this?
Charge through it.
Okay, so, Eric Cotton, again, so the last time we were here before you was in the September workshop, in which we discussed the changes that had to be made from the original July twenty twenty-four due to the changes to Senate Bill one eighty and the changes that were made to that. So we have a couple of amendments. Go real quick. The, let's move the smaller, which was to change the bill-to-line in Seminole Heights. Included in that change are graphics that reflect visibly how you measure that in the drawings, and then that was, and that was when the council initiated.
Staff, hold on a second.
And, and if you wouldn't mind, just for the public, just clarifying what that is, because I've gotten a couple of questions from Seminole Heightsers.
Okay, so the bill-to-line is measured from, based on the, from the property line back to the property based on the average of the two lots on either side of, side of the subject property.
Give me PTSD.
No, but I, so, so the question is, the bill-to-line, where is it being measured from? That was specifically the question I got.
It's measured from the property line back towards the structure itself.
Okay, so it's not from the middle of the street, it's not from?
Not from the street, not from the edge of pavement, is measured from the property line.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what the drawings will now definitely reflect that change.
Great, appreciate that.
And the other changes were administratively done either by myself or by Dana. One was the appeals of the A R C. Instead of going directly to council, they would be appealed to the A R C, decisions with the A R C administrator. The use-to-use buffer, which had to do with residential having to provide the buffer when adjacent to commercial, that was, some of that was inadvertently put in the code that we have since removed. And the other one was generator stands and setbacks and A C units. As TECO, if you recall the conversation, as TECO has required people to get up and out of the flood zone, A C units had to be up and out of the flood zone. We incorporated all that into the code, it would not have been previously in the code. Yes, ma'am.
And what, just, just a reminder, what is that setback?
The setback is three feet. That's what's been in the code for as long as I've been at the city, so we just.
Yes, I appreciate it, just wanted, yeah, just wanted to make sure people know.
So that was the first round, that's item sixty-two. There's no questions on that.
Any questions? Hearing none, next.
Well, I think you have to take a vote.
I, I thought you were going to present them all, and then we're going to.
Do you want me to do some of them all? Okay.
Do a multiple vote.
Okay, that's cool. Next is a, was the text amendments to comply with Senate Bill ten eighty, which, you know, state should have been one eighty and ten eighty, they should have kept a different number affiliated with that. There's two of those. One is to create the standards for site plans, some of that was not currently in the code, and they were narrowed down just to the variances because of Senate Bill one eighty. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm just asking, are, are you into number sixty-three now?
I'm into item number sixty-three.
That is what we have agreed on.
We're going to just have them present all, all items and then vote.
Okay, so her together voted separately.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Follow along.
So the only change was strictly to the variance review board. The application for the variances because Senate Bill one eighty prohibited changes to the design exceptions and other items that we wanted to make modifications to. And the other section is to two eighty-four point two point five, which is the tree and landscape regulations about tree removals, which was, instead of having, which would allow the arborist report to be used instead of requiring staking out the actual site. Unless, of course, natural resources staff says you need to stake out the site, that's still in the code that would allow that requirement to be, to be in there. So that would be, that's the summary of, of item sixty-three, or proposed ordinance for the, for item sixty-three. And then going into sixty-four is the extended family residence language, which the amendment was to try to bring it into compliance with the changes that were made to the accessory dwelling units in probably two cycles ago. So that was the changes. Basically, property should be homesteaded, non-conforming structure could be used for a extended family residence. Previously, we, we would deny it administratively, it would come before city council. And then the yearly, the inspections during COVID, we stopped doing the inspection, we changed it to just doing an affidavit, saying that who's the individual living there, and that we just codify that requirement. And that's, any questions on item sixty-five?
Any questions for staff? Okay, let's do, for public comment, I'm just going to call them one at a time. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item sixty-two? Hearing none. Is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to item sixty-three? We have two? Uh, we, we, the staff presented them all, and then we're, I'm just asking public comment individually. So you want to speak to item sixty-three?
Yes, sixty-three.
Okay, very good. Start with your name, please.
Carol Ann Bennett. I want to say how happy I am about the site plan for the V R B. I, my forehead is bloody from beating my head against the wall at the V R B and trying to get things done right. I was at a hearing where the hearing had been going on for an hour, and one of the people, one of the members finally said, is this a one-story or two-story? And they said, oh, it's two-story. Wasn't reflected. They didn't, they didn't even have the footprint of what they were building. They, we, they asked, well, how many square feet? We haven't decided yet. It was, it was horrible, so I'm very, very, very happy to see that. My only question about, and, and one of the parts about the tree I really like, my only question is the staking. I don't, I don't fully understand why it's now becoming optional. The staking is very helpful. We tend to be visual human beings. The natural resources people, I think they like being able to go to the site because they do and, and see, and I know the neighbors and other people that, you know, they can't, some of them don't even know how to look up an arborist report, and so they don't understand what's being done, but if, if you're walking your dog and you see the stakes, it's like, oh, well, that's good, that's bad, whatever. So I'm not, I, I don't understand the staking and the making it optional, and I don't think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Stephanie Pointer. One thing.
She's a different item.
Oh, oh, you're doing tree. Can I do the extended family?
Well, is there anybody else here that wishes to speak to sixty-three? Hearing none. Are you here to speak to sixty-four?
Well, kind of, and all three, actually. I just got a text message that says that July twenty twenty-five privately, publicly initiated text cycle has zero information online, nothing on the website, and supposedly they had a public meeting this week on it.
That's the next one. This is twenty-four.
This is twenty-four, okay. This is back it up. Okay, there we go.
Never mind.
The extended family units, you know, like I said, I, and the homestead covers it for my military folks, assuming that they are keeping their homestead in Tampa or in Florida. But I'm concerned that you can't charge a family member money. I'm sorry, but, you know, I, I have a friend who lives across the street whose mother lives with her. She's eighty-five, and you know what? She gives them money. So why would you say that an extended family member can't give you money to pay their way? I mean, it takes away some of the power from the people who are, you are trying to help. Sometimes very, very proud people have to live with their children, and they don't want to live there for free, but this ordinance makes it not okay to live there for, for, and pay some rent, or pay a utility, or pay something. And as I stated earlier, my, I own my mother's house. I made her pay rent because otherwise she was going to drink it all. Paid the taxes, that's all it did, but it paid the taxes. So sometimes there are other extenuating factors. I don't understand why that would be illegal. It just doesn't make any sense to me that it would be illegal, because that's what happens when it's in the code, so, thank you.
Staff, I had the same question. So why go to the, why, why? That doesn't make sense to me either.
Eric Cotton Development Coordination, so there's this distinction in the code between an accessory dwelling unit and an extended family residence. That extended family residence has been in the code, I think, was in the code under chapter forty-three A, so that language has been in the code for a very long time. Right now, the, right now it says, we cleared it up, because as it says in the code right now, it says residents may not, it says may not pay rent. We changed it to a shall. The goal is for an extended family residence now is to be family, a family member, and the concern is if you start, regardless of what people sign, if you start allowing people to pay rent or pay for, they can't be separately metered for utilities, so there's no way to capture that cost. But if you start saying to somebody, well, you can, I have an extended family residence, you're my cousin now, and you can pay me a thousand dollars a month to live here. That's the concern, that, that's the concern that, that council historically has had on these, on the, on the special use requirements for extended families. I mean, if Councilman, if Councilman Miranda was here, he'd be talking about all the ones in West Tampa.
Oh, yes.
But I mean, it seems weird making somebody criminal, all announced, just a wink, wink, nod, nod. It seems kind of odd to codify that you, you're turning that into a criminal act. Councilwoman Hurtig?
I, I've spoken about this before.
I, I've spoken about this before. I do not understand why we have two different ways, especially now that ADUs are becoming more prevalent. Not only that, I actually, we were speaking about this earlier, about the fact that there is legislation that has been put into Tallahassee that would make ADUs legal everywhere, and to totally take our, it out of our hands. And I really think that in the land development code update, if we're not doing it now, I think in the land development code update, we need to reconsider extended family dwellings to simply be accessory dwelling units. I don't see the difference right now. I, I mean, I, I understand there's a technical difference, but I don't see that people are using it that way. Because, yes, technically, you can already, you can already, it's not mandated, it says it's illegal to pay, but I wouldn't know of anyone who wouldn't, like a, and, and we can't stop that. If, if the person living there pays, we can't do anything about that. So I, that's what, that's where I've always had a frustration with extended family dwelling units. I, I think ADUs, the, the rules behind it can fix it. I'm, I'll support this now, because I know there's some change that will be coming from the state level, whatever it's gonna be, in the spring. So I'm fine with this for now, but either waiting for the state, or, or looking at it during our revamp of the land development code is something I'd like to see.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so my understanding of the difference between the two is for taxing purposes, from the property appraiser will tax an ADU because it's income-generated, where an extended family, for a family member, is not supposed to be income-generating, so they don't send that as additional tax on the property.
So would that, would you think that distinction would be still there with a may versus shall?
For, I'm not the property appraiser, I can't, I would imagine the answer to that question would still be yes, but I can't. That's the question you'd have to ask them.
Councilwoman Young, you have any questions?
Well, that was actually gonna be my question, just, you know, language is, is, one word can really change things, so the difference between the may and the shall, I guess, I kind of, you know, have the, the same sentiments. And then why, why the, why the change? Why change? Because may is more, you know, permissive, and shall is kind of more definitive. So what, why that change?
It's been a discussion in the time I've been with the city from city council. Again, you know, one individual who brings it up a lot's not here today. But that's been always a concern from city council was people getting extended family residences and then turning over that, turning them into rental properties. This is before ADUs became a thing in the city. You know, ADUs are outside of the area near, near Lowry Park Zoo, central Tampa. ADUs elsewhere in the city have only been around for about two years. Part of that, that was the only area that allowed them, where extended family residences allowed them forever, everywhere else. Ma'am?
Seminole Heights and Tampa Heights have for the last ten, or since two thousand and seven?
Well, Seminole Heights has allowed them since the Seminole Heights district went into effect. Yes, correct, I apologize. But before that, extended family residences were the only place in that area by Lowry Park.
So what's, what is the sentiment of Tampa, shall versus may, or the Tampa City Council? Is there?
I don't think we need to change it. I think may is fine.
I'm just gonna inform a little conversation. May? Councilman Carlson, what's your feeling on this? May?
Did Mr. Sink want to speak?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, we're not there yet.
Well, I know, but we're still, okay, okay.
I guess, has any of the other questions? Mr. Sink, did you want to speak to this item?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
He's not Mr. Sink anymore. He's Planning Commissioner Sink.
So I, I promise I will be-
So I'm gonna call you TPO Sink.
You know what? I've been called a lot of things.
I'm sorry, he is right. Commissioner-elect Sink.
See, there we go.
Go ahead.
Well, good afternoon.
Whatever your name is.
Matt Sink, four-one-zero, West Park Avenue, on item sixty-four. Something I just wanted to bring up, and it's the may versus the shall thing, which I think is really important, is I'm not sure also how we're getting around bill one-eighty. So you can't be more restrictive than we were prior to the hurricane, and that sounds exactly like what we're doing. But I wanted to show you an example of something that is getting built in Tampa Heights and as a extended family residence, right? So it has the overlay for design, right? So it's in historic district, so it has more cost and expense to get built. And this is a seven-hundred-square-foot unit. So first floor is garage, second floor is living space, right? So you're talking about three-hundred-and-seventy-seven square feet, I think, when it's all said and done. They're very expensive to build. You're paying for minimums for concrete, you're paying for a whole air conditioning system, you're paying a lot of really expensive things. So if you look at like sticks and bricks, just not even land, but just sticks and bricks before margins even added to it, you look at about a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars to build this. Well, we have an aging population where a lot of the boomers are starting to retire, and they're gonna go into retirement incomes versus, you know, their normal, they want to be closer to family. That may versus shall is a huge difference, because people can offset some of the expenses, but they might want to take their pension money, or their retirement money, and apply it towards offsetting that cost that their other family member's gonna take on. So I think there's a whole nother layer here, which is like, they're expensive to build, we want people to be close to the family, we want these things to build community, but we also have to find a way where the balance is done, where people can help offset their family members in a way that makes sense. So taking it to the shall really kills family members' ability to take on that responsibility, and just puts more on the government, public services, charities than we actually need to do. So I just wanted to bring up the cost factor of this, and how you kind of make that work in reality, because they're just really expensive to build. Price per square foot, you're looking at, what, four-hundred-and-fifty bucks a square foot? I mean, it's a lot, but because you're paying for a little tiny square footage. And I think that's something that would be important for city council to consider when looking at something like this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Ms. Bennett, you want to speak to a different item?
Sixty-four, which I have not spoken on.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Carol Ann Bennett, I just want to point out that extended family units have always been allowed everywhere in the city. Anybody in the city can build an extended family unit, there's no geographic restrictions. As far as the may and the shall, normally, to me, it's pretty clear with the difference between the two, but in the context of this sentence, honestly, I, I can't figure out the, the difference. And frankly, I'm a grammar Nazi. So, you know, I have to decide, do I want to correct their grammar, or do I want to have friends? But I'm not seeing it. But let me just point out, I went to a lot of meetings about ADUs, and one of the things that was brought out is that if it's going to have income, it is actually sectioned out on the survey, the property appraiser evaluates it separate from the other residents, if there's, if it's gonna be income-producing, and that portion of the property, the percentage of the property is not, doesn't get the protection of the three percent cap of the, of growing every year. Whereas something like this, because there is no income, it would be different. So honestly, I almost feel like we have to have the property appraiser weigh in on this. I'm not an expert, I've just gone to the meetings, and they said there were definite tax consequences if it's going to produce income. And so, I mean, you know, grandma can always slip you a couple hundred.
Well taken.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else wishes to speak to any one of these three items? I'll open it up again for all three items. Anybody else? Hearing none. Let's go with one at a time. Let's go with item sixty-two. Item sixty-two, Mr. Carlson, would you like to? Oh, we don't have, okay. Can I have a motion to close off public hearings?
Actually, I have a question.
Okay. Councilwoman, her take.
Um, can I just have one? So in, because we are debating may versus shall, can you give us your legal opinion on this?
So Dana Crosby, call your city attorney's office. I, I think that Ms. Bennett and Eric Cotton have given the history of how that has always been handled, and how that's always been defined, and the reasons why. Do go back to your tax consequences. It's very correct that may and shall have very different meanings when you're looking at laws and bills and whatnot. But if someone were to charge, it says they may not currently under this code, if they were to charge rent, they would no longer be an EFR, they would now be an ADU. And that could give rise to other issues, such as zoning issues and whatnot. So if you would like us to change it back to may, just because you're more comfortable with that, just understand that the, I had in a Senate bill, one-eighty, concerns with the shall, because we're not changing anything in our practice. Nobody's having to do something now that they don't have to do last year. You still can't charge rent, or you're gonna have other consequences, such as zoning and, and taxes. So you can change it back, and there would be no heartburn, but I'm fully comfortable either way.
And I think that's really my question, is if it doesn't matter if we change it either way, then what does it matter?
Yeah, the practice will stay the same. It was really meant to clarify, just so people really understand, now that, like Eric said, we're having more ADUs coming into the community, but they're very limited geographically. This was made, really intended to make it abundantly clear, that if you want to build an EFR anywhere in the city where ADU may not be allowed, then you're not gonna be able to charge your family rent, because it's an, it's an EFR.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Mr. Carlson, Councilman Carlson.
Yet, in either interpretation, does it allow, would it allow Airbnb under state law?
We, the Airbnb is, these are not supposed to be rent-generating properties. So if you build an EFR, you must, it, like Eric said, we go and check every year to make sure you have your family member in that building. So that's the intent. If that were to be misused, then we would have to do a code enforcement action.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because somebody's gonna ask.
But the other thing is with the short-term rentals, you know, we do have, are, we predated some of that, which is why we have a longer period of time than, than a lot of other cities. But this should never be a short-term rental, because now you're violating your approval.
Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion to close off the one-thirties? We have a motion, Councilwoman Hertek, a second for Councilwoman Maniscalco. Does in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Councilman Carlson?
I need to read the whole thing, or?
Yeah.
I move item number sixty-two, file number E-two-zero-two-five-dash-eight, CH twenty-seven, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, and ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, relating to publicly-initiated tax amendments, making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, amending chapters twenty-seven, zoning and land development, amending section twenty-seven dash forty-three, definitions, amending section twenty-seven dash one-one-eight, approvals by ARC Administrator, amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-one dot one, general administrative procedures, amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-one dot two dot one, general district development standards for Seminole Heights, residential single-family detached, S-H dash R-S, district amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-one dot two dot two, general district development standards for Seminole Heights, dash residential single-family attached, S-H dash R-S dash A, district amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-one dot two dot three, general district development standards for Seminole Heights, residential multifamily, S-H dash R-M, district amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-one dot two dot four, general district development standards for Seminole Heights, residential office, S-H dash R-O, district amending section two-seven dash two-one-one dot two dot five, general district development standard for Seminole Heights, commercial neighborhood, S-H dash C-N, district amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-one dot six, development standards for commercial mixed-use or other non-residential, S-H dash C-G, and S-H dash C-I, development amending section twenty-seven dash two-eight-four dot three dot three, landscape area and tree planting requirements, amending section twenty-seven dash two-nine-zero dot six, air conditioning and pool equipment, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion for Councilman Carlson, we have a second for Councilwoman Maniscalco. This is a legislative matter for first reading, I would just do a verbal vote, right? Yeah. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. I just, the, the electronic vote was flashing, I mean, I'm going, am I confused?
Motion carry unanimously, second read and adoption will be held on December fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at ten o'clock a.m., in City Council Chambers, three-one-five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-zero-two.
With Miranda being absent.
With Miranda being absent.
Thank you. Okay, item number sixty-three. Councilman Viera, would you, oh, sorry. Huh? Yeah, wait, did I split that way? No, I'm gonna come back this way. Are you second-guessing my strategy? Okay. Councilman, Councilman Viera, noted.
Yes, sir. I read an ordinance presented for first reading consideration, ordinance, City of Tampa, Florida, relating to publicly-initiated tax amendments, making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, amending chapter twenty-seven, zoning and land development, creating section twenty-seven dash seventy-one, site development plan for variances, amending section twenty-seven dash two-eight-four point two point five, permit for grant tree removal application required documentation, standards and criteria for decision, inspections, petition for review, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Motion carry unanimously, with Miranda being absent, second read and adoption will be held on December fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at ten o'clock a.m., in City Council Chambers, three-one-five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-zero-two.
Thank you. Item number sixty-four, Councilwoman Young, would you like to read that for us, please?
Item number sixty-four, file number E-two-zero-two-five-dash-eight, chapter twenty-seven, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, and ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, relating to publicly-initiated tax amendments, making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, amending section twenty-seven to one-thirty-two, regulations governing individual special uses, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Young. Council, Councilwoman Hertek.
Um, I would still, I would like to change that shall to may. And I, I don't know what sentence it is, so is there a way, can you, could you just put it on the wolf, and I'll read that sentence out loud? Because that way, we don't have to open the hearing again. So this is my amendment for you, Councilwoman Young.
Okay, Councilwoman Hertek.
For section twenty-seven dash one-thirty-two subsection F, the occupants of the extended family residence may not pay rent for the use of residence or property. Do you accept the amendment?
Okay, we, we have, we have a friendly amendment from Councilwoman Hertek. You accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, we have, so we have a friendly amendment from Councilwoman Hertek, the maker of the motion has accepted that amendment, and so the motion for item sixty-four as amended, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it unanimously.
Motion carry unanimously, with Miranda being absent, second read and adoption will be held on December fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at ten o'clock a.m., in City Council Chambers, three-one-five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-zero-two.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hertek.
Um, I want to talk about sixty-six.
Yeah, we're, we are moving on to item number sixty-six. Should we give a staff presentation first, or?
I don't know that we need to. That's, that's kind of why I want to have this discussion. So staff came to me twice about this, and I brought up every single thing that was brought up in public comment today, and they wanted to bring it forward anyway.
Okay.
And I understand we're gonna have people here to talk about it, but ultimately, I don't even know that we need to. I think there are other issues that we can, we can debate, and quite frankly, I, I, I don't know, I don't want to spend a lot of time on something that we are not going to approve.
Can I, I don't have a crystal ball, but, Councilwoman Carlson?
Counsel.
Councilwoman Carlson? Councilman Carlson?
Um.
What are you laughing at?
So I've had a lot, a lot of complaints about this, the gangs, the, the motorized vehicle, motorized bicycles, they're running over people, they're threatening people. It's bad enough that there are a lot of bicyclists who aren't following the rules. There's all kinds of dangerous things. One of the reasons why Tampa gets a bad rap for bicycle safety is because there's so many people that don't ride them correctly and break all the rules. I was, when I was an activist before I got elected, I was out in front fighting against biking while black. It was a terrible policy. It was created by a mayor who intentionally was oppressing the black community in Tampa. And it was put in place by a handful of people that created that policy, and it included incentives to incentivize people to, to check, to check it up. I talked to the reporters who write, wrote the stories. It was not an accidental thing where they happened to pull over a bunch of black people. And it was, it was a horrific policy that was intended to oppress people and get them to, force them to move out of the city, which succeeded, because a lot of people did move out of the city, between that and renting while black. We absolutely cannot, cannot push this again, again. If you're worried about, I, I don't know with all the new rules from the federal government if we're allowed to do this, but if, if, what we could, we have updates on biking while black occasionally, what we should do is get updates on this occasionally, if we have it, to make sure that nobody's, nobody's abusing it, and that the administration doesn't target anybody. But a random person, regardless of their color, is riding a, a motorized bicycle and threatening people who are on bicycle or on foot, should get a ticket. And, and the gangs of people that are threatening people pulling up around the cars and threatening them, I have people calling me crying about that, and they want the police to have more, more. So we need to make sure that it's not racially oppressive, although this mayor was one of the architects of biking while black, she apologized for it, and I don't think she's gonna do it again. So what, what we can do is try to put the safeguards in to make sure that doesn't happen.
I know we just did the grace of, of having this discussion first. I think at this point, I think it would be important to just follow council procedures, and let's, let's start with the presentation, and let's, let's just do, handle this as we normally would, normal council business. So staff, would you please do a presentation?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Carl Brody, Legal Department, and here for first reading of item sixty-six. As you know, I think I talked with each one of you prior to bringing this forward, because we were aware of some of the concerns that are out there, and we wanted to provide some support and some comfort level, that, you know, this ordinance is put in place purely as a public safety ordinance, purely because we have received complaints. You've received the complaints, and we've talked about that, city council members have seen, received these complaints from the public. Tampa Police has received complaints from the public, I have reams of emails from the public with, with concerns about this. And also, my Parks Department has received lots of complaints from the public, based on large groups of bicyclists on these multimodal trails, based on folks out there doing tricks and wheelies and things like that, based on the electronic vehicles that are out there now. And remember, this is focused purely on our multimodal trails right now. This isn't gonna be something that's gonna be, able to be enforced on our regular streets and our regular parks. This is something that's for the multimodal trails. That's the, the purpose, to protect what those are put in place for, which you approved many years ago, Riverwalk, Bay Shore Boulevard, other trails. They're intended for a specific purpose, and that purpose is being defeated because purpose, and that purpose is being defeated because of folks out on bikes doing tricks and wheelies, large groups of cyclists, and all these new electronic vehicles that are out on those trails, impeding what the purpose is, which is for the regular members of our public to be able to enjoy, you know, traversing, uh, the Riverwalk, Bay Shore Boulevard, and other trails without, you know, being terrified that they're gonna get knocked over. So let's talk about what the ordinance does. What it does is it prohibits folks from do, folks from doing wheelies, from doing tricks, from doing stunts, that's not gonna be allowed. It sets a new speed limit on these trails down to ten miles per hour, which is, you know, primarily to address the concerns with the electric vehicles that can, you know, get pretty high in their speed. We're also going to require groups of cyclists or groups of any, um, vehicles to ride two abreast in these areas. Obviously, if you ride two abreast, that gives room for the pedestrians, for others who are using the multimodal trails to be able to traverse without any complications. And, um, finally, we're gonna limit the width of the vehicles that can be on these multimodal trails because their, their purpose is really for walkers and cyclists and folks who are, um, not taking up a lot of space and allowing others to, to get around and move without any concern. So that's what it does, very limited in terms of what the restrictions are. We do have enforcement mechanisms, we have to have the enforcement mechanisms, and those are at the lowest though that we have, which is seventy-five dollars for a violation. But, and this is important, and, uh, councilman Clinton and I talked about this, and we wanted to make sure that the public's aware of what the violation would be before we cite anybody, and that's what we've gotten agreement on. If this is approved, there will not be a citation for a violation of this ordinance for thirty days, and during that time, city parks and recreation and Tampa police will provide an educational campaign for the public to make them aware, we'll have signage up, we'll have direct programs in place to make folks aware of what the potential violations can be. Um, one of the other issues that came up, and this was with councilwoman Young, we talked about this the other day, alternatives. If the kids can't do their tricks and all that good stuff out on the Riverwalk and other multimodal trails, what can they do? We checked, we have two parks that have skate parks which allow that kind of activity, which allow you to do bike stunts and all that good stuff. The county has multiple skate parks which would also be viable alternatives for the kids to do this kind of thing, and also we don't, this doesn't regulate the private, uh, sphere at all, so if they're, you know, in, on private space, they can do whatever they want. That's not something that's controlled by this ordinance. The key is that, you know, we have these multimodal trails for a specific purpose, and that's being defeated because we have large groups of cyclists, as you were saying, councilman, um, Carlson, we have large groups of cyclists, we have the groups on their e-bikes and all that, and they're not allowing the public to enjoy these spaces the way they Complaints have, many, many complaints have come in, you all have received them, you know what I'm talking about, and that is the purpose here. What I want to do is bring up a couple of law enforcement officers who have observed what's been happening out there on the trails, they can talk to you about that a little bit, and then as needed, we can have a further discussion on enforcement and whether the concerns raised earlier today are something that we need to, um, provide some kind of comfort level for you. So first we'll have, can we have the officers come up first?
Let's continue the presentation, because then actually Maniscalco will be next to speak, and then I'll go back to the people who have spoken already, so.
Okay. Thank you, um, I think we have corporal.
Flanagan.
Flanagan.
Yes, sir.
But we're gonna, we're gonna try to keep, because we're trying to keep these presentations, I noticed the timer was not set, but we're trying to keep this because we don't want to be here until midnight tonight, so try to keep these kind of short, okay?
Just be short, sir, thank you.
I see just three of you guys, so.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Um, came over to the bike unit in September of twenty twenty four.
Start with your name, please.
Sorry?
Start with your name, please.
Corporal Ryan Flanagan, Tampa police. Uh, came last year to the bike unit, and I quickly learned from the officers on the squad, the limitations they deal with when trying to enforce some of the problems that we deal with on a daily basis on the Riverwalk, and that's kind of how this conversation got started. Um, I can tell you, the complaints that you all see are many. When we ride almost on a daily basis, we're stopped by numerous people that have and expressed these concerns to us also, and we talk to them, explain what our limitations are and what we're trying to do to help them, but spoken to many people about this issue, and there's a lot of concern within the community about it, and we are just, our hands are kind of tied to what we can do to help them at that, at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, just to piggyback with.
Same thing with your name.
Nate Horvath, I'm the sergeant of the bike squad, just to piggyback with what Ryan said here, um, numerous complaints, the main thing I, I wanted to make sure you guys are aware of, we're here to educate them on this new rule, we're not gonna be out there, you know, tackling people and taking them to jail. It's just one of those things to educate them, listen, you guys gotta slow down, you have to allow people to pass, popping wheelies, basic, basic stuff. When you get a large group of riders like that and they look like a gang, they're not necessarily a gang, it's fifteen, sixteen-year-olds most of the time, but there are particular leaders of that group, and those are the ones that we will be after. We'll be educating them very, very well, um, but our number one goal is to not cite them, like, uh, everybody was saying, we're gonna just educate them on the rules, and at that point, then we'll, we'll go forward. But, uh, at the end of the day, it's, it's a few select riders that are leading these groups of bikers. Um, we've sat and talked to them multiple times, and they're very respectful ninety-nine percent of the time, and they listen to us, but there are a few that, just like anywhere else, that create some issues, and that's what we're trying to deal with and trying to resolve all these complaints, and I really appreciate you all's time.
Thank you. Did you have something to add? Okay. You want to wrap it up?
Yeah, we'll just wrap it up, we think it's an important ordinance, we think there's something that was asked for, that, that, that we've heard many complaints about, I mean, and that's one of the issues we run into, is when we get these complaints from the public, and, you know, it seems like everybody is pretty much in favor of doing something to address the problem, so we, we're bringing it to you to try to address the problem, and what I can say is that there are valid concerns raised from previous actions, those cannot be used against us now because that's not what's, uh, what this ordinance is for, and that's not how it's gonna be implemented. And just by the very narrow scope of it, it limits what the concerns raised were, um, how they can impact the different communities.
Okay, thank you, um, so it's gonna be councilwoman Maniscalco, councilwoman Vera, and then we'll go back to the two speakers that everybody spoke about.
Thank you very much. Uh, sir, does this cover the Riverwalk?
Riverwalk, Bay Shore, and the other multimodal trails.
Thank you very much, so for the last five-plus years, I've received endless complaints about biker gangs, and at first I go, biker gangs on the Riverwalk, and I spent a lot of time on the Riverwalk. Then more people started complaining, then it was more people, then friends of mine, what are you gonna do about these bi, biker gangs? What does it even look like? So one Sunday night, I was out there where you sit on like the swings kind of thing, the, the, you know, two people can sit, and all of a sudden, it's like thirty, forty people, very close together, popping wheelies, going through areas, this is like a Sunday at seven p.m., there's kids, there's elderly people, there's families, there's individual people walking, there's people on a date, whatever, and I'm thinking to myself, oh, this is what they mean. I mean, it's so, it comes out of nowhere, and they're so close to folks that I'm thinking, one head injury, one kid gets knocked over and slammed into the concrete? I go, it's just a matter of time because it's so intense. One person complained and they said, you know, I guess he yelled at them saying, hey, slow down, whatever, and I think they followed him home, they, you know, he lives somewhere in downtown area, so he's in fear. I mean, I, I don't even know how many complaints I've gotten over the years because it's been numerous. Another thing is, I'm on the Riverwalk and I see the, the, the officers that are patrolling on the bikes, not once have I ever seen them harassed, bothered, you're just riding the bikes up and down, just keeping an eye on things, then you have the security and the golf carts and whatnot, um, but I've never had an issue with that. I am supportive of this because of the, I must have received at least a hundred complaints from people, then I've witnessed it myself more than once, and I'm thinking, this is bad. Councilmember Carlson brought up a few good points. We should get status updates, you know, to what's being done, so we know. Um, I'm glad that one of the officers mentioned, we're gonna educate the public, you know, you have thirty days to tell people, hey, slow down, hey, you know, we're gonna start ticketing. Uh, I think I heard the number like seventy, seventy-five dollars, you know, don't, you don't need to take these people to jail and give them an arrest record, but at the very least, I don't want somebody getting hurt because it's city property, we're gonna get sued, it's a liability, someone's gonna get hurt. Uh, again, you know, you get, you get one head inju, injury, you can kill somebody. I mean, that's, I mean, they come at a rapid pace, and you, people can laugh and go, that's ridiculous, but once I've witnessed it, I said, this is bad, and I want people to feel safe. That Riverwalk gets very, very busy. When I go, I go as early as I can, and I see a few people, but throughout the day, throughout the weekends, there's so many events out there, and it's not, oh, well, when it's busy, when there's Riverfest, when there's trick-or-treating, you know, Halloween, you know, out there when it's full, they're gonna, not gonna come out there, they come out there when it's busy. I mean, it's not like, you know, certain hours, it's anytime, and the more people you have, the more risk is involved. So thank you for bringing this up. Again, we need to monitor the situation and see, you know, see in a few months if it's working, how many people have been educated, you know, and see if we can make a dent in this, but I've, I've received over five years of complaints, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vera, then councilwoman Hertec.
Yes, thank you very much. So, you know, my thoughts on this are, are very simple, which is we're getting, um, a, a lot of reports of this issue, and we can't tell the public, um, we're not gonna do anything. Uh, that's the major thing. I, I, I think there is a reasonable path forward, which is says that we pass this ordinance, and again, we have status updates on potential inadvertent excesses that could come from a policy, uh, and I think we're all very, very sensitive to that. Um, I, I, I think that by saying essentially, we're not gonna pass anything to address this concern, um, that's wrong, that's, that's very, very wrong. Um, I, I remember, man, about two years ago, I was in Ebor City, uh, we were having dinner and coming back, and there was a, I don't know if it's a biker gang or whatever it was, but there were a bunch of folks, about twenty folks and on bikes, going up in, in Seventh Avenue, and I was driving one way, and there were about ten bikes coming up against my car, and it was very, very scary. I, it's funny, I forgot about that until today ironically. So having updates on it in terms of inadvertent results of this policy, I think are very, very important. Sometimes policies are passed, um, which have caustic effects, which we have to be aware of. I think of the, um, the so-called crime-free housing program, I, I was here for that, um, and I opposed that early on, and I spoke to police officers about that, I remember being at a PBA, uh, police memorial event at Hunter's Green, and I asked some officers about it, and one told me, I didn't sign up for policies like this, for the crime-free housing law. This is not such a policy, this is the stuff that people sign up to come police officers for because you're protecting the public, so why wouldn't we protect the public? And again, if there are inadvertent results of this, we want to know, and I think inquiries, quarterly, annually, whatever it may be, that for me is reasonable, I'm fine with that, because again, if we abdicate our responsibility inadvertently on this and essentially do nothing, I think that would be very, very misguided, so just my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hertec.
Thank you. To me, this is exactly the same thing as the Ebor curfew. We are, we are throwing the baby out with bathwater. First of all, this policy will not help you if your, if your car is surrounded, because this is only for.
Multimodal trails.
Multimodal trails. So that's number one. Um, number two, I am the only person on this council that cycles, at all, and I had a lot of, of what I thought were productive conversations, none of my suggestions were seriously considered, or just flat-out said, no, we're not going to do that. So my first one was, um, seventy-five dollars for a first offense ticket is ten hours of minimum wage work, and that's what we're doing, we're talking about teenagers, ten hours of minimum wage work for teenagers. Um, I wanted a community service program, and they said that was too hard, but I think community service program is absolutely what we need for things like this, because money is something that people can pay, time is something you have to spend, like it, if you're spending your time and, you know, thirty hours of community service instead, to me, that's a much more meaningful and, uh, much more meaningful punishment, and makes you think, but just slapping folks with a seventy-five dollar fine and only thirty days to educate, I have a problem with. My other issue is, I want it to be equal. I, as a cyclist on the Riverwalk, have giant problems with people walking, they walk five abreast constantly, and they don't want to move for you, even though I'm going the speed, even though I'm dinging my bell and I say, on your left, everybody, they turn around and they look at you dirty and they're like, I don't want to move. So I said, okay, well then why don't we have it for pedestrians as well? If pedestrians should only walk two abreast, I thought that was very reasonable, they told me no. So for me, this isn't just this, it's, it's, if you want to do something on the Riverwalk, it needs to be for everybody. We need to say, two walk, two abreast for walking. I, I think that's very reasonable. I think finding, uh, another way to, to teach, and we're really talking a lot about young people here, teaching young people not to do something, money isn't going to help that. My other issue is, we have a speed limit already. I agree, I do believe we should move it down to ten miles an hour, but I want to know how that's being enforced now. If we have, if, we have a very clear fifteen mile an hour rule on the Riverwalk, how many tickets have we given out? How often is that worked? Because I agree, those e, e-bikes are awful, let's, let's legislate that and let's fix that, but I want to know how we actually go about, uh, ticketing folks for, for, for running, for, for driving faster than that. So, so these are the, these are the concerns I brought, which I thought were very valid concerns, and no one, no one wanted to consider them, and so, so that's where I'm going to be on this. I will not vote for it currently as it is, but I will vote for it if, if it includes pedestrians having to walk two abreast, and it also includes, um, some type of community service or a much, much more reduced fee of maybe twenty dollars, because I don't want kids, because what happens if it happens twice? If you're a teenager, first of all, you're not smart, I mean, bless their souls, they are not ready, they just aren't. They, they'll make a mistake more than once, and I don't want that to be something where they can't get a driver's license when they turn sixteen, that they can't get a job because they have all of these, these, these marks against them. I want to make it low enough, if we are gonna have a ticket, that it's reasonable for, for young people to pay, and so that they aren't in a system one way or the other. And I know we're not going to give them, we're not gonna arrest them or anything like that, but, but it has to be a very low fine, so that, a, and then, you know, after like the second or third fine, okay, then we start jacking it up, but, but, but we are really talking mostly about teenagers here, so I want everyone to think about that. I have no problem with idea overall, but I really believe it needs more modification.
I'll take my opportunity to speak. I, I don't disagree with, did you want to speak, I'm sorry?
I, I thought I had it, please, I mean, go ahead.
Um, I don't disagree, councilwoman Hertec, but I, what I keep hearing when I, when I was hearing you talk is that it's a search of, don't let the circle of perfection get in the way with actually doing something, and I think that, and I guess I agree that where you're, we're going is probably a more perfect world, but you have to start somewhere, and we can what-ifs it to death, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I, I mean, yes, but what I'm saying is simple things.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I think.
Seventy-five dollars is crazy.
Well, I think that's a, but like your issue about I'm doing community service, I mean, that's a whole pro, I mean, that's a, that's a big can of worms.
Sure, which is why I said twenty dollars is fine.
Well, I mean, we, we get. Councilwoman Young, go ahead.
Um, so, a few things, um, as someone who, um, uh, you know, lived during biking while black and had some family members, um, that had to deal with that, um, it, you know, that it, I have some questions, and when we had the briefing, we did, you know, I did, um, I did bring some of them up and just some of my concerns. Um, so one of the questions that I asked was, you know, when, when I see the word wheelies, you know, I'm specifically, I'm thinking about kids. Um, as someone, you know, that work, work with kids, and, you know, I've had kids that would come to my program on a bike, um, and so I'm, I'm, I do think that we should do something, um, but I'm very, I'm very hesitant, um, because like I, like I said during our briefing, um, you know, I don't want to crimina, criminalize our kids riding their bikes, um, and a lot of times, it is a lot of kids, I've seen the kids riding their bikes too. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant, I agree with a lot of the sentiments, um, that councilman Hertec made, um, just, you know, some of my initial, you know, thoughts, um, do we already have signs on the trails already that say, no, you know, speed limit, or no, you know, groups that are two abreast, we don't have any of those signs?
No.
Okay.
Because we don't have, we don't have an ordinance yet.
Right, we don't have an ordinance that would address that right now.
Okay.
What they have is the speed limit sign on the Riverwalk.
Okay. Um, and then also, I know that, you know, we talked about, you know, doing the education campaign, you know, after, but. but has there been any type of education campaign, maybe prior to this? Maybe some kind of just like outreach to educate people more before, um, you know, going straight to fines? Um-
Can I respond real quick on that? And that's, that's kind of the problem we run into.
Mm-hmm.
We can't educate them on nothing.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, we don't have anything in place. So, we can't teach them, we can't tell them, no, you can't do this, no, you can't do that, no, you can't have wheelies, no, you can't, you know, dominate the, uh, roadway, because we don't have any way to enforce that. And we, we don't have authority to if we don't have a law in place on it. So, that's why we're here today.
I'm being, um, I do, I'm interested to hear, I know this is going to go for a second reading, to hear from, uh, to hear from the public. Um, but just my, you know, initial thoughts, I just, I feel like, you know, especially people who lived during that time, and, you know, it, it brings back, um, you know, it brings back some of those memories. So, I just, I do think that we have to do something. Um, I do agree with that. Um, but how we go about doing that and making sure that we are not, um, you know, that we're, we're not creating a system where, you know, now kids cannot ride their bikes, or they're being fined, or, or, you know, cited, and then, you know, there's effects after that. So, that's, that's where my hesitation comes. So, I would ask if we could really consider, uh, maybe some of the, you know, thoughts that Councilman Hurtak had, or if we can sit down, you know, talk again about some different strategies, just to be sure that we're, we want, we talk about kids aren't outside. We want them to be outside. And, but again, I understand the importance of doing something about it. I don't disagree with that. But I think how we do it, I think is really important. And I'm, you know, kids, kids are my soft spot, so I want to be sure. There, there's sixteen. They're just out doing things.
Now, one thing to note, and I think the officers would back me up on this. A lot of folks we're talking about are not kids. Is, that would be accurate, wouldn't it?
I think somebody's-
So, a lot of these people are, are not kids. There are kids, but they're, that's not the majority of what we're talking about. Even the stunt bicyclists and, and wheelie folks. I mean, we know most of the cyclists are adults, um, you know, the groups you see riding around. So, it's not a, a huge group of children that we're talking about. And, um, if I can take, take one second, Councilwoman Hurtak. I did listen to you, because we did sit down a couple times. And, uh, if you notice, I, I added that, uh, thirty-six inch width prohibition that we talked about to address, you know, having the larger profile vehicles on there. So, that's in here. And, um, our-
But the pedestrians aren't.
Pedestrians aren't in here because here, and here's why. You know, just from a legal perspective, we have to have a reasonable basis for anything we do. We've received complaints about bicyclists. We know that's a problem. We've observed them. So, we have a reasonable, um, basis behind putting an ordinance together to address that. We don't have the same for pedestrians. We don't have folks telling us, I mean, you, you have said that-
I will call you every single time if I need to.
No, I said, you have said that. But as compared to the complaints we're getting about bicyclists, it's a thousand to one, maybe even more than that. So, that's the problem, and when, we have to have that reasonable basis in order to pass an ordinance.
But to me, it's a fairness issue. Anyway, it is, it is, uh, Councilmember Viera's turn.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jim Chair. Um, question for you, Mr. Brody. Um, Councilwoman Hurtak brought up the issue of some sort of a progressive, um, you know, going higher scale on, um, on penalties. I think that's reasonable. We could start off at twenty, then perhaps go up to seventy-five. Is there some sort of legal or major policy issue with TPD, or that would be unwise?
This is why we have Mike Schmidt from, uh, TPD Legal here for us.
Good afternoon, Mike Schmidt. Um, I, since, originally when I started in 2013, I served as municipal prosecutor, so I'm very familiar with our different fine system and things like that. Uh, currently under our code, twenty-three point five dash five is what sets out the, uh, different fine amounts that we have for civil citations. We have four classes of fines right now. Class one fines are a violation of seventy-five dollars. Uh, class two goes up to one fifty. Class three is, uh, three, three hundred, and then class four is four fifty. So, it can go up to five hundred dollars for a civil citation. Uh, these are essentially like a parking ticket in some way, because what happens is, it, once you get a fine, uh, you get issued a ticket. The ticket goes to county court. County court judge can give you as long as you need to pay. They can give you a payment plan. Um, so, I've been in there numerous times, and I've seen county courts give a hundred and eighty days for someone to pay something and on a seventy-five dollar citation. But seventy-five dollars is the lowest fine amount that we currently have set in our designated schedule of fines. And the reason it's important to stick to the fine schedules is those all get uploaded into our, uh, database for the violations, so that the vendor, which we currently use is a system called Trax, and the officers use that system, and it populates the fine amount based on the class level. So, I mean, while in concept it could be done, but in reality, twenty-three point five sets out the different class levels, and those are supposed to be followed. So, that's what we do. We try to keep these uniform, concise, consistent, uh, based on the fine schedules that we currently have set out through City Council.
Yeah, and I was going to say that. So, no, number one, you said in concept that, I mean, are, are our hands like legally tied from going under seventy-five?
I mean, now we're talking, I mean, no, your hands are not tied, is the answer. No. They're not tied. It makes it more difficult administratively, but can, can anything, can something be done? Yes.
So, in other words, so, there, there's two issues here, which is Councilwoman Hurtak talked about community service. I bet you that the objection to that was because of the administration, uh, or, um, uh, compliance with it. I, I understand that.
And I can also explain-
But doing a first time at twenty-five dollars, let's say, or twenty dollars, and then going up to seventy-five, I understand that there would be some more administrative work for people. I'm very respectful of that. But I think the juice is worth the squeeze on this. I do. Because seventy-five dollars, if we are dealing with a young person, that is, that is a lot of money. By the way, maybe twenty-five bucks is, is a lot, right? I, I worked at Wendy's for four dollars and twenty-five cents when I was a kid. Who knows? But, um, but I'm willing to support that. I do think the juice is worth the squeeze, and if we can do it legally, a hundred percent for the first time. Um, because again, we should pass something with teeth, something that's going to make a difference in these areas. But I do think that we should look at taming the potential excesses of it. And I do think that that scale that, that Councilwoman Hurtak talked about, that I'm willing to support, is reasonable. I'm all for that.
So, in an effort to move this along a little bit, I know people want us to talk some more, but is there consensus that we reduce this to twenty-five dollars? And do you think we, I'm sorry, twenty dollars, would there be support for that, to move this along? And then up to seventy-five for second offense?
You want to do twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, so it's just-
Twenty, twenty, thirty, fifty, seventy-five?
I, I have more comments.
I mean, do we need, do we need any more comments on this, or is-
Yeah, I have a couple things to say.
Okay. I just, I'm, I'm just trying to get us out of here by six o'clock, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quick.
Okay. Yeah, same here. Is there, is there, is there kind of, do we have consensus on the fines, the schedule? Mr. Shelby?
Can we wait a week?
Well, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, just a reminder, your policy is to take public comment at first.
Oh, I, I understand. No, I, I understand.
Because that might-
We're getting, I'm just saying, but before we got public comment, I want to say, to, to guide this along, if we're going to get, reach consensus on this. I didn't ask for a vote, I asked for consensus.
I have other suggestions if we're going to do that today. I think we should-
Well, how about we have a motion to continue this then? If you want to do that, if you have, if you, if you want to rework this?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
This is first reading, so we can pass something on first reading, and then it, just to at least get the ball rolling, because we have people here, we have officers here and attorneys here. I think we do have some consensus. Again, I'm all for twenty, seventy-five, or twenty, whatever. I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, so, let's, let's, let's think about this for a moment. Further discussion. Councilman Carlson, then, uh, Councilwoman Young, and then Councilman-
Well, no, it was him, and then, then, then it's me, and then it's her.
Okay. Councilman Maniscalco.
Okay, so regarding-
Councilman Carlson.
Oh, I, I beg for correct.
Carlson, Maniscalco, me-
This is what happens when you can't leave the dais for a minute.
Yeah, then, then-
Councilman Carlson.
Uh, just clarifying question. It says city parks, uh, Bay Shore, uh, is included?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, uh, because that's one of the main areas I've heard of complaints. Um, I share the concern that, um, Councilmember Hurtak has about teenagers. You know, one of the, one of the big things about biking while black was that, uh, kids, when they grew up, if they threw their ticket away, they might not be able to get a driver's license and a, and a job. And we need to make sure of that. What, a question is, is, is there a formal warning as the first time?
Well, the way this will work is, again, the first thirty days, there won't be any citation at all. There'll just be education. They'll just be informing, there's a new ordinance in place. After that-
That could be enough.
No, there's not a process. There's not a process for a warning first.
It, does our system enable a warning at all? Because even if it's a twenty dollar fine, if the kid throws it away and, and throws away two or three of them, then they won't be able to get driver's license, right?
Um, Mike Schmidt again. Uh, yeah, absolutely. Officers always have the discretion to provide warnings. In fact, our system that we use for the citations in these systems has a warning, uh, option, and it's frequently used. I was looking at the stats earlier, and I think, um, I mean, out of like, uh, if there was approximately, I'm just trying to remember off the recollection, but of, I think, of seven hundred, for example, bike, uh, uh, offenses, I think five hundred plus would be a warning.
I don't know if it's possible to just add that as a line into the ordinance, but, but to say for, that, you know, first, and I don't know how you ID somebody who's underage, but-
That is the problem. It gets, it, so it's best to, I mean, it gets very complicated to know whether or not somebody's-
Doesn't have to be an age thing. It could just be a warning for everyone, for sure.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about age there, but, but if somebody doesn't have an ID, I don't know how you would track if they've gotten a warning before. So, the first time they would get a warning, if, if somebody has driver's license, you'd be able to track it in the system. If they don't, I don't know how you do that. But I, I would rather have a, a formal warning process. The other thing is that, um, this kind of goes back to the discussion we had a few years ago on skateboards, where somebody was trying to ban that, and several others who used a skateboard said, no, we don't want to do that. Um, I'm not against kids doing wheelies. I've never heard a complaint just about kids doing wheelies. It's the groups of kids that are intimidating people by doing wheelies. And I wonder if there's a way to tighten the language to say, it's not, if a single kid is doing a wheelie, I don't think they should get a ticket for that. But if, if a group of people are doing it, or even one or two kids are doing it, or adults are doing it in a, in an intimidating way, uh, like the complaints we've heard, they're going up to people and doing it in front of them, the intimidation is the thing that I think they should get tickets for. Um, the last thing I'll say is that, um, I, I, I would rather, I would rather have a continuance, by the way, to, to address some of the issues. But the last thing I want to say is that, the, back to biking while black, the Justice Department did condemn the city of Tampa for that. And I want to make sure, and they condemned us for, um, for renting while black. And I want to make sure that we don't get condemned again. And again, it was not the police officer's fault. It was a policy made at the top. But I want to, I want to point out that Chief Burkhall has been very responsive, and all of his team have been very responsive on this. They created a task force to address the, the groups of people that are, that were on bicycles, and the constituents really appreciate that. And the, and a difference now, between, between now and the biking while black time, is during biking while black, sometimes they would pull kids over because they didn't have lights on their bicycles. Now, the police, for the last seven years at least, the police officers give out free lights to kids who don't have them. And so, there's a huge difference in approach now, and that, that's a difference in the administration. Because I think that, as I've talked to police officers, they would much rather give a, a kid a free light so they can be, be safe in the neighborhood than, rather than give them a ticket if they're not doing anything else that's dangerous. Thank you.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know, but I'm watching, I'm watching the sentiment of this council, and I see, I don't see more than two of us that are firmly committed to voting on this for tonight, uh, to this afternoon.
I just have a suggestion.
Okay.
And he needs to-
I'll be quick. I'll be quick.
Yeah, I'll do two, I'll do two minutes.
Councilman Maniscalco.
Suggestion, comment. So, two weeks after I got my driver's license, when I was sixteen years old, I got a speeding ticket, February two thousand and one on Euclid and Del Mayberry. It was a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I cried to the cop. Nobody felt sorry for me, and I told my parents, and my punishment was, good, you're going to pay for it. A hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and I was making like forty bucks, fifty bucks a week, back then, was all the money in the world, number one. So, that taught me a lesson, where I didn't get a speeding ticket for, I don't know, ten years or something, after that. Second, in regards to the people that walked in fours all the way across, whatever, several people have suggested to me, why don't you put arrows on the Riverwalk? You know, this way and that way, because psychologically, psychologically, and I would follow this, you would say like you're driving. You, you walk on the right, you walk, at least there's a pathway, because the way it looks like now is the free-for-all. You can go this way, that way, go across. You know, not cite the people that are walking in four, but the arrows might be helpful. People go, okay, we know somebody's going to come the other way, mind the gap, kind of thing. So, that's it. Those are all my comments.
That's, that's a great suggestion, and even better would just be a line down the middle. That's pretty much how almost every, every, everything is done. So, I have a couple of suggestions with this. First, I'd like the, the education to be ninety days instead of thirty days, because thirty days is not enough time, really, to hit the people it needs to hit. And then the thing that I don't like about this, that I think seems to be, what I hear from people, is the bigger concern also, is that groups of cyclists surrounding cars and not riding two abreast on the road. So, if we don't already have rules for that, is there a way we can put rules for that in this?
So, that's, what we did is, we took Chapter three sixteen, uh, which has biking regulations. We took those biking regulations and pretty much copied most of those into this.
Okay, so we already have those rules.
There already is a rule that requires two abreast on the roadway.
Okay, that's what I thought, but, um, and then, I, I do like the ten mile an hour. Um, so I think that's really good, and I appreciate the rest. But, uh, for me, the ninety days and the twenty dollar fines, um, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, if, I mean, if, if-
And this will be it from staff?
This will be very quick.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if the concerns are the ninety days and twenty dollars, I think we can address that in the interim period between first reading and second reading, and get this in place, because I think that's the concern, is get this in place, especially with the holiday season coming up, to have these rules in place and have, let TPD have some kind of, um, enforcement authority just to start this education campaign, because we can't start the education campaign until an ordinance is in place.
Councilwoman Hurtak.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with that. The only thing I would ask between first and second reading, at least for me personally, is a, is a, um, is a, like, personal, um, meeting, just a little update, and I think maybe the rest of us might, I mean, I don't know. I want one. I don't, I can't speak for others. It sounds like Ms. Young also wants one.
I will come to each one of you.
No, but I think we, we want to put some of those safeguards in that you all talked about. And so, the purpose of briefing us is not just to brief us, to make modifications between first and second.
Yeah.
We, we, I think the consensus, we don't want to repeat biking while black, for sure. We don't want to, we don't want to have any kind of screening.
And I'm not worried about that.
So, can I, can I, can I get a-
Motion to, but, or take public comment.
I know, I know we need to get public comment first.
But the problem here is that it's, there's, it's already difficult, because we have to change the entire code section-
That's why I think a continuance is-
That, I, I agree. I'm, I'm, at this point, because, because of the code, we, we're going to have to modify a whole different code section. That's the, that is the, the fines. And that's going to take time as well.
So, under twenty-three point five dash five, we suggested it be added into Table one. What we could do is make a, uh, subparaphrase in there that says specifically, for this ordinance, the fines shall be X, Y, Z. So, we can address that still.
We can accomplish that without a, a modifying the other, okay.
We can, we can line item this one out essentially, as a unique circumstance.
I will go, I will go with the, the-
First and second?
Yeah, because here's the thing. We, we already just had a second reading where it turned into a first reading. Again, if we have to do that, we have to do that.
Okay, um, so that is, concludes. I'm going to go to public comment unless there's any other comments, and then we can make the modifications when we read this. Uh, anybody wish to speak to this item? Line up behind Stephanie Pointer on the wall. Stephanie Pointer, go ahead. Start with your name, please.
My name's Stephanie Pointer. I taught kids for eighteen years of my life, mostly middle schoolers. And then I taught at Job Corps, eighteen to twenty-four-year-old high school dropouts in between DC, Baltimore, and Annapolis. Their frontal lobes are not fully developed until they're twenty-five years old. Remember that. Remember that. It takes a while. Um, I, my big thing is warnings first. And I don't have a problem in the world with, uh, with, uh, community service, because they can do it at school, they can do it in neighborhood meetings, they can do it in lots and lots of places. And they know how to do it, especially if they're already in high school, because they have to do it for bright futures, if they want to get anywhere. Um, I, I really, uh, seventy-five dollars is a lot of money. Not at my house. It's not at my house. But it is for a lot of folks. And, and you can't just wash that to the back of the room. Um, I, I just, kids have to learn. And you can't start out by smacking their hand because you're not going to get anywhere with them. And I, what, what I thought was very interesting was, the lady from the River, Riverwalk this morning said, this is just going to match the state statutes. Where the hell are the state statutes? And what I'm also concerned about is, I hear Seventh Avenue. All the TPD officers are standing by the seven-eleven. Then I hear, oh, all the police officers are together. They're not interacting much with these folks. And let me tell you something. I would walk into the pack of all of them together, because I don't have a lick of home training, and I don't have a lick of sense. I'm the lady who took a whole bus full of kids to the DMV every single week, by myself, and I never had an issue, because I had expectations. And if we're not teaching those expectations now, you, it doesn't, you don't have to write a warning. You don't have to give somebody a ticket. It doesn't have to be against the law to have a conversation with a child or even a young adult and say, this is why you shouldn't do this. But my biggest concern here is, where can they do it? They can't do it in the streets. It's, they're gonna get dead, okay? This is on the safe place. And there are signs on Manhattan, along the, um, trail on Manhattan. I don't remember what they said. It's been a long time ago since I've seen them. I agree with one way or the other. And they do say something about one, one group stays to one side, one group stays to the other side. But I'm just kind of confused at how this went from zero to seventy-five bucks a pop. That's not fair. These kids are outside, they're not sitting at home in front of a freaking computer. They're not sitting on their phone. They are outside, moving around. We've got to figure out how to corral that. And two parks in a city this side is despicable. It's shameful that we don't have more places for kids to go and do this. I had a man tell me this morning that he got arrested when he was eleven for riding his bike coming home from a teen party. A teen party that was put on at a church. So don't tell me it doesn't happen.
Do you want to speak to this item?
Um, Steve McElhenney, I just want to speak to you from personal experience. Um, and it doesn't have to do with trails. It has to do with public rights away. And, and I was riding on Davis Island when this group of probably forty or fifty young people, they were not kids, they were young people. They were probably eighteen, twenty, maybe, maybe older. And they decided that they were gonna block all of East Davis, all the way out to the airport. They intimidated the drivers. They, they forced them to pull over. These were, what I, what I, what I saw was moms with soccer kids or baseball kids forced them off the road. And they tried to force me off the road and I rode right through the middle of them and said, touch me. Go ahead, touch me. And, and I got to the end of the road, down near, um, near where the commercial center is. And there were two police officers there. And I said, hey, these, these people are out here all over the place. Look at, uh, YouTube on Davis Island bike riding and you'll see it, it's epidemic. And it's distracting and it's, and it's destructive. Um, I'm not saying that they all should be punished, but you need to give these law enforcement officers some tools, some kind of tools to, to try to enforce this, because they don't have them. When I stopped with the officers, they said, we can't do anything about it. And, and so, I guess it evolved to eventually the officers have some tools where they can stop it. But these groups, they go to Soho, they block the traffic there. They go to Davis, over to, uh, Del Maybury, over by the Publix, and they ride north up there and they, they stop the traffic up there. And, uh, law enforcement has finally had some tools. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what they are. Um, but if you can't go to a park and you can't enjoy yourself because the bikes are, you get run over, where are you gonna go? And I mean, I agree with Stephanie, you know, we need to have some other alternatives, but those parks are way up north and outside in the county. You know, the lower forty-eight, maybe that's an ideal location for something, to have some trails down there, uh, some bike riding trails. But it, it is a big problem and it is unsafe and it causes other people to have, uh, serious other accidents and problems. I don't know if you remember this, but there was a woman in Hyde Park that, that had to be rescued by the police because she was so intimidated and in tears because she could not get her kids. And she had her kids in the car, couldn't get them home. So anyway, it, it is a problem. Thank you.
So can I get a motion to close?
No. I have something I want to say.
Okay, Councilwoman Hertek.
I just want to make a point that Mr. McElhenney's, what he's talking about is completely separate. And I also agree that we need to find a way to, to figure out what's going on, on, on the street. Like, if there's a way with drivers that we can, because if we don't have laws for that, we need to have laws for that. Um, so I think we're looking, that, those are two separate issues and I think we need to find answers for both of them. This is just simply for, um, multi-use trails in parks, correct? Correct? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is there anything we can do about the streets?
The streets are regulated by state statute, so we have those rules in place within the statute. And that's why we brought this forward, because we want to try to align them and provide a few extra protections for our multimodal trails, specifically Riverwalk and Bay Shore Boulevard.
But that's not my question. My question is about the streets.
Yeah, no, no, that's state statute and, um.
So, so we can't make that any more stringent on our streets?
Just have to enforce it.
Yeah.
Well, but that, but that's what he's saying. He was saying that he ran into the officers in that very instance and it's, and he said that the officers weren't able to do anything and that's the issue. So.
Again, again, not, not, not what we're, not what we're here to talk about.
Not into the statute right now, but that's, the statute does have protections in place.
Okay, let's, 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 let's move on, because this is just about, this is limited to the item that we're, before us today is about Bay Shore, Riverwalk, and tra, multimodal trails. Okay, so, can I get a motion to close and then we can move? We have a motion to close from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, what is the will of council? We can, I see two things happening here. We could continue this to February fifth, which is open, or if you would like to move this today with amendments, because I don't see that there's four votes to, as is, we can move this with amendments. What is the will of council?
May I?
Yes.
I suggest that we move it today. We're gonna have second reading to have another bite at the apple. We can make the changes now. February fifth, folks, we're in November. I mean, that's three months away.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that there's, is there, is there a will to move this with the consideration of a ninety-day education period? And then the amended fines, is that the issue? So. Councilwoman Hertek, would you like to define your wish for that?
Um, I think twenty dollars and, uh, then I, I'm fine with fifty and seventy-five. I mean.
You don't want to do twenty-five, just to make it?
Sure, then fine, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is there is a will to move this ordinance today with the amendment of a ninety-day education period and all the other things you said, percentage and all. And then, and then the fine schedule to twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five.
Can we also formalize the, the warning, though?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's, um, two warnings, uh, so twenty-five, or one warning, one warning?
Well, there's not gonna be any way of tracking this. I mean, there's, there were these, if, if they're, they don't have driver's license, so I think that would be.
We could still ask them.
But, but here's the thing, you know, it doesn't matter if they have a driver's license. If they, if they get a fine, they're gonna have to give some sort of identification. So, so, I mean, a warning generally, when I've been, I mean, generally they take information.
If you've been warned once, you've been warned. I mean, if you know, if you know that there's a law, you know there's a penalty involved with the law, they've been warned once. So I, I would like to see this move with those two, between first and second reading, those two. I mean, is there anybody that would just?
With a single warning?
Yeah, with a single warning, yeah.
Single's fine.
Okay.
Okay, uh, who would like to read this? Okay, Councilman Maniscalco.
Here with all the.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Young, you had to say something?
I have a comment. Um, just for the, um, for the public outreach, um, I would ask that you all really, like, go all out for the public outreach, um, down to your schools, your nonprofits, you know, bike stores, if you find groups, um, you know, bikers right now, so that this gets, so that, um, everyone is aware that this is happening. Um, 'cause I, I really, I, I agree, we have to do something, but please, let's make sure we do it the right way.
Do you want to make that part of the motion?
To have extended public outreach, yes.
Be very specific.
I'll, I'll add it if you want.
Yes, yes.
If you agree with it or?
Okay, Councilman Maniscalco, why don't you take a bite at this, read that with those three items and let's see where we go from there.
If I can.
Mr. Shelby.
I'm Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. With regard to the outreach, that is not necessarily part of the ordinance. So it'd be a separate motion?
That would not be part, I would assume that would not be part of the ordinance, because, I mean, the ordinance really isn't, sorry, Carl Brody Legal Department. The ordinance is in place to provide requirements for the public to comply with. This would be separate, this would be something that we would just request the Parks and Rec Department and the Tampa Police to take the next step to go ahead and, um, do that, and to do that outreach.
Okay, so, okay, so Councilman Maniscalco, would you please read this with the two amendments of the ninety days and then the, and then the fine schedule?
I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, amending City of Tampa Code, Chapter sixteen, Article three, Section sixteen dash fifty-three, Regulation of Vehicles Within Parks in Chapter twenty-three point five, Section twenty-five point five dash five, Scheduled Violations and Penalties. Set Amendment Providing Prohibitions and Fines For Improper Operation Of Authorized Motorized And Non-Motorized Vehicles On Multi-Purpose Trails Within City Parks, Repealing All Ordinances Or Parts Of Ordinances In Conflict Therewith, Providing For Severability, Providing An Effective Date With These Changes Between First And Second Reading. First, you have a warning, then it's a twenty-five dollar fine, fifty dollar fine, and finally a seventy-five dollar fine. And for the first ninety days, that is when you educate the public. So before you even get into the warnings, for the first ninety days is, hey, you, you're not supposed to do that. Hey, we have new rules in place. Hey, you know, let people know for those first ninety days.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vera. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Oh, ayes, okay.
Um, I'm, I can't vote for it until I've, I've talked to my community, till I've reached out to the biking community and see if this is acceptable. So. This one's really hard for me. So, uh, you know what? I'm gonna, I'll vote yes, but I, I, I'm really going to reach out and, and I'm, and I'm gonna get people to call you about, um, the pedestrians, because I want that added between first and second reading.
Okay, is, is that, are we okay with the unanimous vote on this?
If I can, Mr. Chair.
And we can change our votes next time.
Yeah, Martin, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, I'd like to address what Councilman Carlson was just, uh, alluding to. Um, this is a legislative matter. It's a policy decision.
Correct.
Um, the purpose of having the two readings is to have a public hearing afterwards. Um, so you have the opportunity for the community and the outreach and, uh, you are not bound by your vote at first reading. In effect, when you do a first reading, technically what you're really doing is moving it to a second reading and a public hearing and an adoption hearing. So it's just a process of, of the two readings.
Okay, very good. So, that passes unanimously. Counsel, I'll recognize Councilman, I know it's new business, but we'll, uh, recognize Councilwoman Young to introduce her proposed motion.
Let me call the vote first. Motion carried unanimously. Will Miranda be in absent? Second reading and adoption will be held on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at ten AM in City Council Chambers three one five, East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Councilwoman Young, you have a motion?
So, I'm, motion for, uh, extended, for staff, um.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
Forgive me if I do.
It's okay. I want to make sure I get it right.
Well, I, what you said before was good, but now we have to put it in the form of a motion. That will show up in the minutes and which will go to the administration to implement. So what you're gonna be is you're going to be requesting of the administration and fill in the blank.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna be requesting s- staff to provide extended public outreach, um, for these new ordinance, um, including, uh, Hillsborough County Public Schools, nonprofits, um, organizations, churches.
Bicycle shops.
Bikes, bike groups, biking shops, social media, TV, flyers.
Radio.
Radio. Yes.
I think, I think you said, like, uh.
All, all forms of, of transport, of communication, yes.
Yes, yes, sir. I, I, we would welcome your guidance.
Yes. We, we are gonna put this on the, uh, city website, TPD website. So, it'll be there, but it'll be in addition to all of the other sites that you just, uh, requested.
Yes, please. Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Young.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Hertek. Mr. Shelby, you have anything to add?
No, 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 I'll do that offline.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Councilwoman Hertek.
Um, and then I, um, I know I've talked about doing this, but I'm gonna ask my aide Kelly Scharf to come out. And I want to schedule, I want to, I want to join y'all on the, on the Riverwalk or wherever as a cyclist, just to, so I can see it and so we can talk more about it. And, um, I, I, I want to make this work.
Okay, Councilman Maniscalco, you got anything to add? I saw your light was on.
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, are we ready to move on? Okay, woo-hoo. Uh, no, mister, but we should go to the items that we pulled, right? Thank you, yes.
Sure. Uh, for item seventy-four, um, I, I really do want to speak about this. I really, really do. But we're, I don't want it to be here for an extended amount of time. So what I propose is that we put it to the next available one and we cap it at ten minutes. It would require a waiver of the rules. This is not gonna take long. I just.
What's, what's?
Yeah, that's.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera to move item seventy-four to December eighteenth. A second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor with a ten-minute time restriction.
Yes, sir. So for Mr. Suter, um, in, in Parks and Recreation, you are hereby released. Thank you.
No, because we have another part set.
Okay.
For me.
So for item seventy-four, a motion for Councilman Vera, a second for Councilman Maniscalco, moving item number seventy-four with a ten-minute restriction. All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Item seventy-four has been continued. Anybody else want to continue something or move it or just, oh, I have one other thing. Item number seventy, um, there will not be staff here. That was posted as a requirement. There will be two public hearings subsequent to this, but staff is just, so I have a motion to receive and file item seventy. We have a motion for Councilwoman Hertek, a second for Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Anything else? Anybody else would like to take off our agenda? Mr. Shelby.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, this gentleman, I believe, is about to leave and you want this distributed to City Council?
Yes.
Is this part, this is part of a presentation that you were going to make?
Seventy-five.
It's on seventy-five, um.
If you could step up to the microphone, sir, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. But, your name, sir?
Uh, Luke Surak.
And are you a member of the public or part of the presentation?
I'm a member of the public.
Okay, and you, and you're asking this to be distributed to City Council?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to receive and file the documents associated with item seventy-five. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from? Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. When we get to item seventy-five, we'll have that admitted. Okay, thank you.
Yep, just a reference. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, let's go to twenty-four and twenty, what was it, twenty-eight?
So.
Hold on one second. Mr. Shelby.
Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, did you move all of those yet that did not require? I think my suggestion is there's probably members of staff and their big-ticket items.
Hanging by a thread.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you go through and the item, items so we make sure we have them all right?
Sixty.
Sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy-one. We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from?
Vera.
Councilman Vera to move those three items. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
What about seventy?
Present, that, that's a presentation.
Seventy, we already, we just disposed of that one. Yeah, we just did that one. Councilman Carlson.
I had pulled item number thirty-nine. Um, can we just go ahead and receive and file that?
Whoa, 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 I'm, I had questions about that one, too.
Okay, okay.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, I had questions, but that, that's gonna be after twenty-four.
Okay.
The audit report.
This will be, this.
Okay, twenty-four, twenty-eight, go. Councilman Carlson.
So twenty, twenty.
Our Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Carlson, Councilwoman Hertek.
Uh, so, so twenty-four and twenty-eight, um, we got, uh, uh, some emails from, um, our City Council Budget Analyst about this. And I just want to, that, so first I have some questions about what is in this Gadsden Park part of the plan. I, we, I pulled the, um, the appendix for the Parks Master Plan and it's not specific as to what we want to, um, what the money is going to be used for. I can't match it. So my first question is, if someone is here from Parks and Rec that could talk to me about, um, about what, what projects are actually gonna be done for this item?
Is there somebody online from Parks and Rec?
No idea. Okay, well, then that makes this easy. Uh, so, the, give me a second. Yes, I'm at twenty-four. So one of the things that, that we were concerned about was the fact that this one point one million dollars is coming out of a small neighborhood parks fund that actually doesn't have two million. It currently has three million, because it has a little bit left over from last year. But the, the concern is, Julian B. Lane is not a small neighborhood park. Fixing the dock, if, would given to us, is not one of the priorities we're hearing about. We're hearing about other parks that haven't been touched in fifteen years needing things. Julian B. Lane hasn't been open that long. So personally, I have no problem with funding Gadsden Park, but I still want to know what it's for, because we can't find that information. But I would move to not support fixing the dock right now and moving that money toward a small neighborhood park.
You said you don't want to fix the docks and you want to move it to a small neighborhood?
No, well, it's already in Small. No, well, it's already in small neighborhood parks, so I. I would, I don't wanna take it out of that for this, um, to me Julian B. Lane is a large park, and I don't, I don't wanna, it's like robbing Peter to pay Paul, and I, we need a lot of work with Parks and Rec, and I think what we have heard overall from this council the last few sessions is that when we get this FY '25 budget left over, that we wanna spend it on parks. So I have heard that we do not, that, I, I believe I asked if this is something that had to move right away today, and from my understanding, no, I would prefer moving this to January at, well, maybe not January because of Gadsden, but I am concerned, no one's here to talk about this today, I have concerns, I wanna know what Gadsden Park is, I don't wanna move money to Julian B. Lane when we have these other small parks that have been waiting years, so this is my concern.
Motion to continue item 24.
Wait, 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 let me, I have a question, sir.
Go, yeah, Councilman Maniscalco.
So, how much of the 1.1 million is going to the Julian B. Lane dock repair?
Do you have that number?
Uh, 350,000.
So the thing is, that park was built and opened in 20, 2018, so it's fairly new, and I know those docks are used, and I see the people rowing all the time, but, um, okay, no, I understand, okay.
So, so, again, I, I wanna be able to move the Gadsden money, but I wanna know where it's going.
Councilman Vera.
Can we get that answered now, I mean, really quick?
Is there anybody from Parks and Rec listening?
Cause I, I mean, I, you know, the.
So how about this, why don't we hold this till the end?
Yeah, there you go.
And Ms. Scharf, if you can find out, and so she'll come to me and let me know when we have the answers to what that money's being spent on.
So we're gonna hold, we're gonna hold item 24.
That's 24, now 28?
If I can, miss, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shelby.
Before you go to 28, number 24, ultimately, once you get your answers, it'll still require amending the resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
28.
Uh, well, and it may, it may not, we'll, we'll see what the Gadsden Park, so 28 is. So we're holding 24, 28 is again appropriating 320,000 dollars from the Parks and Rec Citywide Maintenance and Repair Project to LaLaurie Park Shoreline Improvement Project, and so my question for staff was, do we have a, I mean, have we applied for a grant for these shoreline improvements, because oftentimes, we have grant money for this. My concern again is that Parks and Rec Citywide Maintenance and Repair, I don't know how much, um, Ms. Kapeski, do we know how much money is in that budget? Or, or Mr. O'Hara, he was here to, to, to maybe help.
Can I mention another thing?
Well, and, and I mean, if we have 350,000 dollars, that should go towards the, um, Yellow Jackets, to be quite frank.
There needs to be more transparency, but the other thing is that I'm all, we need to go back and, and maybe talk to Marty about this, but I think the administration is out of compliance on several positions, including the Parks and Rec position, which has, because they've been open more than 90 days, we, not having a director of some of these departments is, is really hurting our ability to move forward on many projects.
I agree, Ms. Kapeski?
Hey, Girl Kapeski, City Council Budget Analyst, um, so there's approximately 850,000 in the maintenance, um, plan, of which I think they're requesting to move 350, right?
320.
Okay.
And, and again, I, I just wanna know, because it's such a small budget, 2 million dollars is, or I'm sorry, 800,000 dollars is nothing, and we're moving over a third of that, and this very well may be a project that has to get done, but is it, is it the priority, um, so, so I am concerned.
There you go.
Uh, oh, good, we, we have someone from, uh, Parks and Rec here, uh, so, so again, I really would, if possible, I would like to postpone these until after we find out what's left over in the 25 budget, because we have stated as a council multiple times that we want this to go to Parks and Rec, but I just don't know how much money's there.
Tony, are you, um, able to speak to items, let's, let's start with 24, are you able to speak to item 24?
Uh, Gadsden Park, what's, what is being done with that 800,000 dollars?
Initially designed.
75.
So we got to figure out the best use of the money, there's some drainage issues out there, there's some bathroom issues, um, I think there might be some support of a challenger league, but, um, if you do postpone, you might get some better information, I'm not the best first, I'm filling a seat, I'm trying to do the best I can to answer.
Okay, and heard and noted, thank you, Councilwoman Hertek.
And my other question is, um, we actually have a line item in the city's budget for ADA compliance, so I'm curious why this is being taken out of the Parks budget, when it can also be taken out of ADA compliance budget, so, so I'd like to be able to talk about the balance there?
All I keep hearing now is this should, item should be continued, additional information, item 24 and 28, I'm willing to listen to a motion to continue items 24 and 28.
And, and I hate to, I hate to move it to the new year, but I really want us to be able to talk about.
So let's do it.
Money.
Let's do it.
Can I just say, for the people who are interested in Gadsden Park, we're not trying to delay, we're trying to make sure that, that the city's gonna spend on the things you want them to spend on.
Yes.
And ideally, the Parks Department would have some kind of meeting with the neighborhood down there, also neighborhoods to talk to people about that.
So, so I will say, um, January 8th, just because it's the first one back, uh, and, and obviously, we wanna get the Gadsden Park stuff done as quickly as possible, so my motion is to move 24 and 28 to together, uh, well, they can't be together because of their separate, um, money movements, but, uh, I, I want to move that they, they be moved to January 8th, 2026, to include a description of what's going on at Gadsden Park, to pull out the Julian B. Lane, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with me on that one, and then to find out if, if there's money in the ADA budget to help, maybe not the whole, but to help with the ADA compliant restrooms at Gadsden Park.
And I have an email right here regarding the ADA compliant restroom at Gadsden Park, so, yes, I'll.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, we have a second from Councilman Maniscalco, uh, this is, our items 24 and 28, to continue both items with the proposed changes to January 8th, 2026, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, okay, we threw that now, um, item number 39. Bill?
Did we talk, Mr. Chairman, 30, did you do 36?
Yes.
Yeah, we already.
Thank you, my, my, I don't, I don't know if, um, Ms. Glover's here, but the, um, there were some concerns raised about the processes at the Convention Center, I, I, I think we need to set it up as a, um, enterprise fund and, um, and have a, as, a sound P and L on it, as I look through the numbers, maybe others disagree with me, but as I look through the numbers, it's hard to see what the real revenues and expenses are in the Convention Center, and obviously, it's gonna have a loss, and we're gonna have to look at the economic impact of it, but we need to put all the expenses in one place and all the revenues in one place, so we know what it is, because right now, we're taking some from CRA and other places, and we need to, we need to know what the expenses are, but this looks like some of the, in the audit, it looks like some of the processes need to be fixed.
I, I think that's, for this particular item, I think that's out of order, I think that would be new business, if you were gonna make that motion during new business, this is just referring, is transmitting the audit, audit to us as informational only to be received and filed, so that. But I mean, I think, I think that may be a catalyst discussion for new business, but I think for this particular item in itself.
I was, I was mentioning that as backup backdrop to, to the, the question about the processes that were, that were not, um, up to par, but.
Okay, Christine Glover, I see that you're on air, would you like to speak to item 39? Yeah, you're muted, Christine, you're muted. Nope, still muted. Is she self-muted? Yeah, it's on your end. Let me go to Councilwoman Hertek, Councilwoman Hertek, you wanted to speak to this item?
So I've had the same questions, Councilmember Carlson, about the Convention Center for quite some time, so I, I think that, um, we could accept this, but then maybe, uh, if you make a motion to have a, to put this on one of our workshop dates, to really discuss the possibility and, and what we're doing, I would support that.
I think that would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion in new business, and I'm not against it, Commissioner, I just want, the public wants to see all the information in one place, so they know what the true cost is.
Okay, so we'll continue this discussion during new business, can I get a motion to receive and file item 39? We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hertek, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, Christine, sorry we weren't able to hear from you, but we're gonna, see if you can work on that, because we're gonna get back to, in new business, we're gonna have this item, if you wanted to talk to something about, okay, where are we at now? 72. Okay, 72, let's talk stormwater.
I think we ought to say that we're at a maximum, we're gonna leave here by 8 o'clock.
You will not, you're not gonna see me past this.
No, we have an event to give, are you going?
I have something else to do.
Transgender Day of Remembrance at Rivercrest Park at 6:30.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, uh, Council, you are the Mobility Stormwater, after, uh, back-to-back storms last year, uh, Board County Commissioners heard Black Beach to perform an independent analysis of, uh, unprecedented flooding experienced in the region, as well as make initial recommendations of improvements that can be implemented in Stormwater Program. And this effort started December last year and was completed, uh, early summer this year, and the, uh, findings and recommendations were presented to the B O C C in July, and recently presented to City Council of Temple Terrace, and I just wanted to emphasize a couple of things, uh, public engagement was a critical component of this assessment, and a total of eight public meetings were conducted countywide between April and May, and, uh, many residents, many city residents and council members attended some of these meetings and sharing their firsthand experience. A second, uh, emphasis is, uh, this effort was fast-tracked, completed within six months, and this is just an initial step of many steps being planned or have started, with that, we are very fortunate to have John Dingus here, John is the, uh, Regional Water Resources Lead of Black Beach, and is a registered professional engineer, and has more than 30 years of, uh, experience working for both public and private sectors, with that, I need to go over to John.
Good afternoon, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, give you a, a report of, uh, our post-hurricane regional stormwater assessment, and we have a slide deck associated with that, so I'll give it just a moment while it queues. Uh, again, my name is John Dingus with Black and Beach Corporation, and by way of introduction, and thank you for that, Yohan, appreciate that introduction, uh, the, the county commission's, uh, charge to us was to perform an independent stormwater evaluation, of course, that independent meant, uh, that we were taking a fresh look at, um, what had happened as a result of the hurricanes, but yet, we were operating independent in the sense that, uh, we were bringing our own analysis and evaluation to the table, so, um, with that, we can move to the next slide, or I can, think I can do that here? Very good. So by way of, um, review of the objectives, our, our objectives were to evaluate performance of the stormwater systems across program areas, determine, or determine what the needs are based on that, and then develop findings and recommendations moving forward, so we did exactly that. All that had to be done against the backdrop of what was a record-setting rainfall year in 2024, um, this slide really tells the story very well, this is one rain gauge in northeastern portion of Hillsborough County, but it, similar rainfall patterns were observed across Hillsborough County in 2024, so you had a very wet season, there were multiple tropical storms, were way above normal rainfall, and then had a really catastrophic rainfall event that led to significant inland flooding all across Hillsborough County. The total 2024 rainfall was a new record since records started, um, at the Tampa International Airport, over 80 inches of rain, which is 22% more than the, the second highest rainfall total of the year, so I hope that helps everybody understand the unprecedented nature of that flood event, and it hit at a time when it, things were completely saturated. Our approach to conducting that assessment in concept was to go get the data, and in addition to collecting technical data, have a robust public engagement process and stakeholder engagement, which included, um, interviews with members of this council, and, uh, that helped us form our database that we could use for that assessment, we then used that data to evaluate program components, develop key findings that came out of that, develop recommendations, and then summarize those, which I'll give you a very high-level summary today, uh, for the interest of time, we did produce a summary of findings report, and then a very detailed, very large project report to go with it. Our data gathering was very comprehensive, and I, I will say that not only did we work collaboratively with the staff of Hillsborough County, but your staff as well, were very helpful and instrumental in collaborating with us to provide all the, the city data as well, and that was very helpful for us, we did the same with the City of Plain City and Temple Terrace, we wanted to make sure we had all the information we needed to perform the assessment, so it was everything from spatial data reports, we did interviews, collected permits, photo, thousands upon thousands of flood event photographs, stormwater models, and we, that really constituted the exhaustive nature of our, of our data collection effort. To touch on the engagement piece just for a minute, uh, the neighborhood meetings, I think, were kind of a, an interesting component of our assessment, so we did not just take our data and run into a, uh, into a room and spend months on it crunching it, we wanted to share our findings with the public, but then receive comment, so we worked with Hillsborough County and opened up, uh, those public meetings as well as their engagement hub, we actually received a tremendous amount of public data that came in through the engagement hub in addition to the eight public meetings, so you can see by these numbers, we had very good participation in that process, uh, and we heard a lot of good comments, they were glad that we did that, um, and one of the items we presented to the public, uh, we began to see trends emerging from the data of flood focus areas across Hillsborough County, several of which actually are partially within the City of Tampa and within Hillsborough County, I will point out that we did not, uh, try to highlight storm surge areas, because we were looking at an inland flooding from rainfall, um, event, that was what drove our analysis, storm surge flooding is well documented, and it, it was not part of our analysis, simply because storm surge is already well established, and there's flood zones where everybody knows that you have storm surge, so these flood focus areas helped us to really drill into where the, um, emerging problem areas were all across Hillsborough County, and some, like I mentioned, in association with the City of Tampa. So when we put all that data together, our findings can be summarized as such, um, when it comes to flood modeling, we found that these predictive models of storm events really correlated very well to documented flood information, um, that is good that it validates the, the floods, um, and our recommendation from that was to continue updating those models, to continue to refine the data and information that can be shared with members of the public. Coupled with that, the models produce information in the form of maps, we found, uh, very, quite a few comments from the members of the public that, hey, I was not in a FEMA-documented flood zone, but I still had flooding either on my property or in some cases within my structure, what's going on, well, it turns out the county, um, really has much more refined models, it's based on better data and information, our recommendations were that, and they've already done this, was to publish that additional data and make it fully available to members of the public. Okay, on the infrastructure side, uh, we've looked at their asset management program, and we also included the city's at, all three municipal governments, we did pull that data in so we can get a feel for it, and we saw common themes emerging from the analysis, so there's a public perception, for example, that ditches are not well maintained, sometimes that's just because they don't look very nice, but, um, the ditches overall were in fair condition, in some cases, good condition across the, the Hillsborough County and for the City of Tampa, um, but overall, functioning quite well, um, in many cases, though, they just needed some more maintenance, so that, that was one of the big ones, the ditches, the other one was pump stations, there's been a lot of conversation about pump stations, and we find that they have been nearing the end of their design life, and our recommendation to the county, and I think would be a similar theme for the City of Tampa, is continue your program of renewing your infrastructure around pump stations, um, so that, I know that's well underway, and that's, that's good, that, we can validate that recommendation, so, um, that will address many of those challenges moving forward with your ditches and pump stations. On the development standards front, we did take a look at development standards across Hillsborough County, uh, one important concept to remember is you can't design stormwater systems to handle the biggest storm you would ever see, simply because it's not, it's just not feasible economically or even technically, so you pick a level of service, and the stormwater design are based on those level of service criteria, uh, we did hear and see development review, staff resource limitations, we all know this is a very busy. We all know this is a very busy area for development, and so there tends to be a crunch on development reviews. And in addition, so additional staffing levels can be a very important part of improving that program, as well as standards sufficiency reviews on flood-prone areas to see, hey, are the standards really where they need to be? Coupled with improved intergovernmental coordination, because if you have different standards across jurisdictional boundaries, then you can have inconsistent application. And what that leads to is water doesn't necessarily see a political boundary, right? So I think that intergovernmental coordination is very important. Moving along on that theme, we did see an opportunity for improved coordination, which I believe is already underway. There were quarterly working group meetings, improved coordination between these entities that are highlighted here on this slide. So consolidating functions, we noted, we talked to county staff about consolidating their functions to really focus in on stormwater improvements and consider how coordination, for example, with F D O T, could enhance their program. And also coordinate with adjacent counties, because many of these watersheds, they're up the hill from Hillsborough County, if you will. So you have water flowing out of other counties into Hillsborough County, and regional flood mitigation projects could be feasible in the future. They're not cheap, but they may need to be examined moving into the future. Public awareness and support. One of our findings was that the detailed work program was there, it was in place, but it had not been well conveyed to the residents. So there was not good understanding with the public of what projects were proposed, where they were proposed, where maintenance occurs. And so our recommendations was to enhance the public awareness campaigns and continue to develop a comprehensive communication strategy for those, for the stormwater program and for future resilience efforts. On the capital improvement front, we noted that the county, similar to the City of Tampa, has a, it's a common theme. It's a very robust work plan for capital improvements. Our recommendations were to optimize project prioritization based on risk. Now, the reason for that, I'll give you an example, and I'll speak to this. The five-year stormwater capital improvements program for Hillsborough County is over $300 million. However, they have a funding gap of roughly $131 million. Here's, thank you. That's very helpful, if you can see that. So with that funding gap, we see that they've planned out more than they can actually have funding capacity for.
CCTV, can you put the Wolf projection up, please?
Yeah, this was from my presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. So I think you have a similar, again, similar theme, that you have more capital improvements in your funding capacity while enabled. And so the prioritization of projects is very important, and targeting your projects where you have the greatest flood risk. Because as you, as you can see from the slide, we told the county, our findings were, based on their benefit-cost analysis, if they were to fully implement that capital improvements program, they could potentially reduce flood damage by like $120 million. That's pretty significant, but it takes a lot of, you know, a lot of capital improvement cost to get to that point. Not sure how I get back to the slide.
CCTV, can you put the presentation?
Okay, thank you very much. I had one more conclusion slide. I can speak to it.
You can speak to it, go ahead.
Okay, very good.
It's not there, but CCTV, it's a black.
I have a hard copy, I can place it right here on overhead, if it'd be helpful.
Okay, how about the Wolf? Go back to the Wolf, please. Activate the Wolf. That's a beautiful picture, but yeah, there we go.
That's a better picture, actually. So in conclusion, we found that there was a robust and beneficial flood management program, and it's providing significant benefit. That's a common theme across all the local governments and Hillsborough County here. Flood modeling and mapping, regulation, and capital improvements were key program strengths. Asset management, including ditches and stormwater pump station maintenance and improvement, those were points of opportunities to continue improvements, as well as interagency coordination, public awareness. Those were opportunities for program improvement and alignment. The public outreach, we conclude, was very successful for the project and continue to enhance that outreach program. The program funding needs elevated consideration to fully implement the program improvements. That speaks to the funding gap that I was just mentioning on the prior slide. But remember, we had record flooding leading to, that was caused by record-breaking rainfall. And those are very infrequent events, but they're very difficult to deal with. And finally, a majority of the assets were built out there prior to regulation. So many, there's a whole lot of systems in the ground right now that were built before the 1980s, and they don't meet the current level of service standards. So you've got, kind of got to keep in mind that that rainfall event falls on all kinds of systems, so those that meet current standards and those that don't meet current standards. And that's part of the issues with flooding. So that, that's the presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to give it today, and thanks to staff for collaborating with us. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Now it's time for rapid fire. Pertec Carlson Maniscalco.
So my first question is about slide number seven, in the flood focus area. Because I attended these meetings, and the folks that went to those meetings clearly said that the peninsula of South Tampa has nothing on it, and that was definitely not, that was freshwater, that was rainfall flooding. And so I'm concerned that we don't have that here, because I think that will hurt people, you know, looking for flood relief, all those things. Why isn't that here?
Well, we focused, we had a scope of work that had to be approved by the county and spend their dollars focusing on predominantly the county's flood areas. And that included focusing on areas that were both across political boundaries, right? Across, coordinated across city and county where their flood zones were jointly across the political boundary. So the details within the City of Tampa, the time and budget were not part of our scope to go into great detail within the City of Tampa.
Okay, so this really wasn't.
It's a county driver.
This is a county project.
It's county driver, correct.
Yeah, so then my other questions don't relate. But thank you very much, because it seems like, based on this, that we, that the city has done a great job overall predicting and planning. We're fixing those pump stations. We're doing a lot of these things on this list already. So I think this is just a nice way for us to feel confident in some of the things that we've done, although it's a good reminder of the things we have yet to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Carlson, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, and just a reminder, anybody who's watching, you are working for the county, not the city, as you just said. But at the, at the public meeting, one of the public meetings in South Tampa, constituents came up to your team and said, what, tell us what's happening in the city. And this is what, six months ago or so? And your team said, the City of Tampa has not shared us any data with us yet. Did you all, you just said that the City of Tampa did share data eventually, but did you all have sufficient time to analyze the city data?
We did, and data collection started in December of last year when we first kicked the project off, and actually continued almost all the way to completion because it took so much time.
When you say data collection, though, you didn't, you all did it, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be tough on you, I'm just hitting you with the answers, and they cut me off with time, so if I go fast and cut you off, I apologize. But you all did not collect any original data, correct? You didn't go out and analyze pumps or analyze ditches?
Correct.
You used the city's data. And so if the city's data was flawed, you all wouldn't have been able to check whether it was correct or not.
That's correct. We collected all existing data. There was no time or budget to try to create new information.
So if you say that the city has done a good job maintaining ditches, you're just, you did not look at the ditches, you're just using the city data that said that they did a good job?
Correct. We used their asset management data and analyzed it against performance indicators.
We know, for example, in the, in the area around Palmasia Pines, the public has pulled lots of public data on that area and done analyses of the former analyses of that area. And they've said that the two retention ponds there did not have up-to-date permits and had not been properly maintained. Did you all, would you, would your analysis have just relied on whatever the city provided? In that case, would you all had any separate analysis of that?
Well, compliance analysis was beyond the scope of what we're trying to do. And if there was a compliance issue, we would hand that off to the regulatory entity to further investigate that. That came up several times during our analysis, so we had to solely rely on the data we received from the county and from the municipal government.
So on, on level of service standard, as I looked it up, there's not, I can't find like a set standard that, across the board. Considering now that a lot of communities use 100-year events, so now we've had Milton, which is 11 inches, what is the, what is the level of standard measure that you use? Did you use the one that the city created? Or did you use one that, from your background experience, is a set standard? And is it different? Would the one south of Gandy be different than the one in Palmasia Pines or in New Tampa?
We, we did not create any new level of service standards. We simply looked at the county's existing level of service standards and compared that to the municipal governments to see, are they consistent? And how are they being applied? So they were existing level of service standards, and we did not recommend any new standards. We simply evaluated what was in place.
So the same, that you talked about public awareness, that the, that the city has a plan, and the city might need to do a better job of making the public aware of it. But the folks that have looked through the plan in the neighborhoods and looked through the plans going back, especially in areas like Palmasia Pines, feel that it, that the city does not have a sufficient plan or has chosen the wrong plans or has set the wrong priorities. But you all, you all just looked at what the city, and I'm not asking this to be argument, I'm just asking to clarify for the public. You all did not look at it independently, you just looked at what the city set as a priority and said, okay, you guys have priorities.
I think that's a fair characterization, right? Yeah, we took the data and assessed it based on our professional experience.
Just a reminder, what, I don't know if you remember when this was first discussed, this was in a cooperative agreement between the city and the county?
I remember what this is.
But yeah, but it only, it only took, like, they were talking about the areas like what happened in Forest Hills, where water from the county flowed into the city. So that's why areas like, Councilwoman Young was talking about other areas in the city, why it's not identified in this report, because it was outside of their scope. So Palmasia Pines was outside of their scope.
I understand that, but there were statements made about, about validating what the city has said. And I think we just need to clarify for the public that, that they didn't do an independent analysis.
But they wouldn't even look, you wouldn't even look at the pumps in Palmasia Pine, like internally in the middle of the city.
But if you, but if you look back.
You're just looking at those identified areas on that map.
If you look back at the claims that were made, I mean, the statements that were made here, it looks like they're endorsing what the city has said. And I'll jump ahead, since I don't have time. You know, the, the, the public does not, does not trust or support, for the most part, what the city has claimed on stormwater. And in particular, around the Palmasia Pines area, they believe that a separate Palmasia Pines project should be done, not the one that goes down Howard. And all the science and previous research seems to indicate that that's true. But again, that was not within your scope, so you're in it. The last thing I want to ask is, you talked about the deficit, the deficit of funding for the C I P for the county. There's also seems to be that for the city. How is the county going to fund that?
Well, to my knowledge, it was on part of our scope to do a funding analysis. There's a separate rate study going on that will inform that process. So the county's undertaken that. As far as I know, it's still in the works.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else? Councilman Buir? No, he said he's.
Since, just as a courtesy, since Councilman Carlson had his district significantly flooded, I mean, would it be appropriate, if he so wishes it, to have an extra two minutes? I just.
I mean, it went past it. I just, I didn't call him out on it.
Okay.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Other quick questions the public asked me, and these are just questions the public's asked me to ask. One is, is there, is there a very detailed report that you all gave to the city? And is it possible to add this to on-base so that the public can see the detailed analysis?
Yeah, right. We delivered to the county a key findings report, which is kind of the executive summary. And there's a very large report with all the information.
So maybe, is it possible the clerk can get that and we can put it on on-base so the public can see it? And the second thing is, the, the county, I think, using your data, has a very interactive website where people can look. If somebody's trying to buy a house, they can look and see whether it might flood or not. Yohan, do you know if the city is looking at doing something like that, similar to what the county is doing?
Yes, U N L E mobility stormwater. Actually, that's our next presentation, and Plaid are going to be giving our quarterly update on the master planning process. As part of the process, public engagement will be a critical component. Again, once we have the flood risks identified, we'll post all the maps.
So does anybody have any additional questions on this part of the presentation? On this part of the presentation?
Yes, I mean, on every, yes, if I may. Yeah, so a couple of things I want to say. Thank you, sir, for your presentation, your hard work. I always remind people that people from the hurricane a year ago are not all right, they're not doing well, they're emotionally battered, they're economically battered, people are traumatized for what happened. I think we have to salute the bipartisan work that went into making this, especially always want to salute County Commissioner Harry Cohen and County Commissioner Christine Miller, who, you know, represent areas, Town and Country, as well as North Tampa with Harry, and with Commissioner Miller, East County that were really, really battered. I like what you said about the pump station program. I want, I want to focus, obviously, on the North Tampa area, with Zone X. It got flooded, there's a lot of different issues. And I want to start with the idea that there's a difference between a single and a home run, okay? That to say, if the issue is, would they have flooded? Would North Tampa have flooded with proper pump maintenance, with proper pump generators, et cetera? I don't think that's a proper question to ask. I think the proper question to ask is the level of flooding, which is, would flooding have been as bad in the Forest Hills, Overlook, Timber Falls area, had there been backup pump generators? That's going to be what my line of questioning is about. So my question is, because again, there are questions that people in these communities want to have answered to the best that you can. And I feel that if the questions can't be answered, then we have to further make inquiries, because if you were a welder or a public school teacher or a first responder, you were in North Tampa, and you lost everything, you sure as hell would want answers, because you pay your taxes and you want those answers. So my question is, you know, there were statements made early on that with generators, it could have helped the situation out in Forest Hills. Those were statements that were made. So my question to you is, sir, had there been proper backup generators and proper pump generators in the North Tampa area, would that have made any difference, given, again, this was a once-in-a-hundred-year, God willing, right, type of a storm? Helena Milton, back-to-back, the tragedy of all tragedies for our area. But with that issue of some of these pump stations going out, not having proper backup generators, et cetera, would proper backup generators have made any difference in the level of flooding that the North Tampa community sustained?
Yeah, based on our assessment, the pump stations and generator systems, their design criteria was to help recover flooding, not prevent it. So the benefit to having them operational would have been a little bit quicker recovery from the flood event. But we've learned very quickly, examining all the information, that those systems were not designed to prevent the flooding from occurring in the first place. Now, that's a, that's a very fundamental design criterion and policy consideration that affects funding that needs to be examined.
Yes, yeah.
So I cannot stand here and say it would have improved the flood condition if they were working, simply because of the design criteria.
So in other words, you're saying, had the, had the pumps had proper backup generators, they not necessarily would have improved the situation, because the pumps themselves were never made to sustain such water that came down from Helena Milton back-to-back?
That is correct.
So in other words, would you agree with the idea that the city should invest in additional pump infrastructures in areas like Forest Hills and throughout the City of Tampa, like you said before, that can respond to such storms as we had in 2024?
As I may have mentioned earlier, you have to look at level of service. And you could examine the feasibility of doing exactly what you said, but the cost, and where do you move that much water? And that, really, is it affordable and feasible to move that much water at one time? So it's not an easy question to answer, but it is one that can be looked into for certain.
And I know when we talked about this maybe two months ago, that's what y'all had told me, and I want to make sure that the public knows about that. That's very important. I also read that you indicated, please correct me if not you, but Black and Beach had indicated that you don't believe that Hillsborough County has enough money set aside to address its needs with, with stormwater and hurricane-related issues in the future. Is that true?
Well, based on the capital improvements plan, we, we saw the full value of the plan or the cost of the plan and the funding, there was a gap. So the funding capacity did not reach that. We said that to the county commission, they're very aware of it.
Yeah.
And it's a common theme that we saw, the projects planned exceed the funding capacity, and there are decisions yet to be made about how to close that gap.
And is the same true for the City of Tampa?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, great, thank you. And I also saw that Hillsborough County fees for stormwater were in the lowest 25% of the state.
Correct.
Correct? How about us, City of Tampa?
Off the top of my head, sir, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Okay, and we can find that on that later.
Certainly.
Yeah, we can find that on that later. Yeah, so I mean, my big issue, guys, is Yeah. So I mean, my, my big issue, guys, is that we, we do really need to look at robust solutions, uh, long-term on infrastructure for stormwater and, and, and resiliency with hurricanes and so forth, because this can never happen again to these communities, whether it's our friends in South Tampa, whether it's North Tampa, whether it's our friends in Town and Country and Plant City out in the county. Um, you know, we have to do our best. We have the information now. We have the information. The issue is how are we going to respond? So, but thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
You know, the problem with that, Councilman Vera, is that it cost at what benefit, you did a cost benefit analysis is like, how much money are you willing to spend to save X number of dollars on property? So are you going to spend a billion dollars to save a hundred million dollars for the property? I mean, that's, I mean, that really gets down to how that's, and again, like you said, that we, I know we overuse that term hundred, once in a hundred, a hundred year event, which we're having every five or six years, a hundred year events. But it's, you know, at, at what cost and who's paying that cost? You know, are we, are we willing to tax those, those very same people that are struggling to get by? So it's, 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 it's a really complicated discussion. Yeah, it's a balance. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. It's, it's complicated. Pick up the city of Tampa and move it to Polk County. Councilman Vera, or Councilman Carlson. I'm getting tired.
Yeah. And we need, we need to, we need to have authentic conversations with the, with the public and not selling them on a project like was done with the South Howard project. That created, it was not the engineering side. It was the selling of it that, that made people distrustful. And then they started looking at public records and they found that things that they had been told were not true. And, and, and seeing the, the lack of maintenance, the warnings that go back to twenty, thirty, no, forty years, to the nineteen eighties in, in Palmasia Pines, that the corner of Horatio and Havana was identified in like nineteen eighty-three as a, as a flooding area, even though, uh, the people there say it's a flood zone X. It, it's a bowl where the water pours in and the city knew it. And, and it, and it has, that solving that problem has nothing to do with the South Howard project. It was, that was conceived and analyzed way before the South Howard project was proposed. And there were, and there are solutions the way the, 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 anyway, there's all kinds of things the public's seen that we need a, we need to trust the public, that they understand what's going on, not sell them. I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to the general to, but we, we need a, a full engagement to look at the options and opportunities and, and let the public come back to us to talk about this because, uh, we, we can't solve everything. One, one last, last question for you. Um, I happened to run into Whit Raymer last night, uh, former sustainability guy in the city. And I asked him, I said, what solutions are there for, um, storm surge? If you look at the GPS map, GIS map of South Tampa, a- a- almost everybody who was hit and flooded was by storm surge and we're not even talking about that. He gave me one idea, which we'll talk about another time. But do you guys have any ideas? Is the county looking? Cause you've got the Paula Beach area and everything. What, are there any ideas for storm, for storm surge?
That's a very difficult topic, council member. And, um, trying to get people out of harms way is, and that's, I think that's the way it's managed currently. But in terms of preventing structural damage, you just, I think you have to over time, uh, upgrade structures to where they will be resistant to that damage, be more resilient. And that's really the, the strategy we see being used all throughout the state of Florida and coastal areas.
Thank.
And so we continue to, you have any, you have another presentation? Is that, are we done?
I do not.
Okay. Good. Okay. Oh, we have another, we have a whole nother person. Very good. Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Illegible Applied Sciences. We're here on item, I think it's the following item. It's the quarterly report for the basin wide, uh, the citywide basin planning effort.
So we're on seventy-three for those of you that are following home.
Yeah.
We haven't lost you yet.
So there's a, there's another slide deck.
Yes. Uh, CT TV, can you, uh, bring up the other slide deck, please?
So while, while that's going up, thank you for inviting us again. We, uh, we want to share with you our progress on the same topic that John just talked about.
Item seventy-three is what we're waiting for?
Which is where we are in the, in the citywide planning process, uh, what percent completes we are and what's coming up next and where we expect to be completed with the program, which is what everybody wants to know.
Okay. We're still waiting for CT TV. Loading. You know, if we had Apple, it would be faster.
I never used Apple products. I was always like IBM platform, but.
So that's okay. I can, I can.
They don't have it.
I can ad lib.
Does somebody have a hard copy they can?
Is it this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have. Here.
Here. Somebody want to, Marty, would you run that down to them, please?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. There we go.
Just take the staple out.
And you can throw it on the wolf?
Yeah.
Wolf.
So, let's see. Here we go. Can you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there we go.
Yay.
Okay. Here's our agenda. I'll be, I'll be very brief. Again, we're gonna give you a recap of where we've done, where we are with the program and our expected days to finalize the effort and next steps. And one of the things that we've talked about before, and John alluded to in his presentation, is that we always like to remind everybody that we talk to about where we are in the process. This is the same process that Hillsborough County follows. This is the same process that Manatee County follows. And what's the beauty of it is that it's not just for stormwater. This could be for any public project. It could be, given the limited resources, human and capital that cities and counties and municipalities in general have, we have to be spending money on problems. And, and that's what that first item is. There's a problem definition. And from that, we go to doing the modeling, which is where we are right now. Then we go to design, construction, and then maintenance. And, um, and following that, let's see, you have it on the other side. So these are all the city basins that we have. And there's a total of forty-six basins and we overlay the districts on that one as well. The blue basins are the basins that are, that have been previously studied. So the ones that have been previously studied, we, they took lower priority and then we focus on the ones that have not been studied yet, which are the ones that are underway and we've shared with you in the past. Let's see.
There you go.
Okay. Beautiful. So we have six engineering firms, local and national engineering firms that are, that have been retained by the city of Tampa to work on this effort. And these are the basins that, that they have been working on. Some of them, for example, like Lower Peninsula is being updated again, um, just because of the development that, that we've had in there. So jumping right into where we are in the existing studies, uh, this shows the percent complete, where we are, uh, as of last week with each one of these studies. And they are, we're happy to report they are all on track. As you see, the majority of those are, um, above the fifty percent level. And we are looking to wrap, wrap up phase one for, for this group one by February of twenty twenty-six. From a budget perspective, also, we're still tracking on budget and, uh, we will estimate that by February twenty twenty-six, we have expanded about forty-seven percent of the five million dollars that has been allocated for this program. The next step is group two, which is our, our next priority. And group two, uh, we, we, we are actually in the process of negotiating those scopes of work for all six items. Some consultants already have theirs, uh, and so, no, I'm sorry, not, not these, not these yet, but we're in the process of actually getting these onboard. And I have a date here that's shown as August twenty twenty-six, and this is when we're gonna finish all the group one. And there will be projects identified by then, which will be this summer. Also to the point that was brought up earlier regarding coordination with the county, uh, we are looking at all these, all these areas that are basins that start in Hillsborough County and drain into, into the city. Curiosity Creek, Hillsborough River, uh, Duck Pond and Drew Park, Northwest Five, those are areas that we're gonna be also including in our, in our effort coming up. And the beauty of this is that once we finish those updates, we will be over the fifty percent threshold that will be needed by the city to get our new CRS, uh, rating with, uh, with that program. And that will allow us to get a discount. Let's see, where are we here? And that will allow us to get a discount once we are done with that program. Uh, we are looking to finish, okay, speaking of the program briefly, uh, we are right now at a five and we're gonna, we're looking to be at CRS rating of three. We're almost there, the fifty percent. It looks different when you're doing it with slides than with paper, but the slides will have been a lot cleaner to, to show. But, uh, when we go over the fifty percent threshold, we will be at the CRS rating of three, which will give us the thirty-five percent discount and eighty, eighty, eight point three million dollar overall savings, which is something that everybody is looking for. From a timeline perspective, we're looking to finish the entire program by December twenty twenty-six, which will be this time next year. So finger crossed, we will continue on that, on that, on that pace. And, and more importantly, we'll, we'll be still forecasted to be under the five million dollars that was allocated. So that's a key metric there. Some examples of some of the projects that are ongoing are the El Prado Outfall, which is, uh, we're, we're starting to see the beginning of some proposed projects there. Same thing with, um, there's another one here. I have one from Lower Peninsula. That's fine. I'll move, I'll move that on. Here's the Lower Peninsula. As I mentioned, we're updating Lower Peninsula as well. Uh, and the beauty here is that, as you know, the city just finished building, uh, Magdil Forty-two and, and, and one, some of those areas. And now we're, we're updating the rest to see if anything needs to be changed from that original recommendation. And you've seen also Manhattan Avenue construction that is underway right now. So avoid Manhattan whenever you can. And with this, we would take any questions that you may have.
Council, have any questions on this update? Hearing none.
Okay. Just a, just a statement, and we can talk about this offline, but as I mentioned in the last session, the, the, the neighborhoods, and this is not the businesses, the neighborhoods have done an extensive study of Palmasia Pines. And, and, um, it has a western outflow down Cleveland and which has been studied multiple times. And, um, outside engineers, um, consulted by the neighborhoods have, have looked at it and believe that a, um, that the city can and should have a Palmasia Pines study that, that would be done separately. And, uh, because now we're being told that Palmasia Pines is in phase two. So it might be five or six years before there's any relief. And somehow folks in Palmasia Pines and Parkland Estates have been convinced that this is going to help them in some way in the short run when it's not. Um, we don't have to have a long discussion about it now, but I, but I, I hope that we can have, um, a dialogue about it. I hope you as outside engineer can help us. Um, there were, there was information was presented the last couple of years that, that it, that does not match with what we're finding in public records. And so, um, what I'm hoping is that we can come back to city council with it, with an honest, thorough analysis to say that the city would save money by, by having a, um, a Palmasia Pines project first. And that would help Parkland Estates because the water would not flow in. What appears happens is the, uh, two, um, retention ponds that were not permitted, not maintained overflowed. And because the Cleveland outfall has flaws in it, um, and, and, and problems with it, that the water flowed into, into Parkland Estates. And, uh, it appears and the public believes that for some reason, the administration just wants this Howard Avenue project, which seems to not make sense. My last, my only question to you, um, the, from our analysis, looking at the bond documents, it appears the city does not have the cash flow to pay. For some reason, the number for, for, for South Howard project is sixty-five million, but we're being told privately that it's a hundred million plus interest. Um, and this, the last presentation was about the CIP for the county. Uh, we know we don't have the cash flow for our CIP overall, but just for the South Howard project, it, from all of our analyses, it, it appears that the administration is going to have to raise the stormwater fee just for that project. Um, does anybody have an answer for that? Can we, can we affirmably? Some people in the community are being told that, that know the administration has the money without raising stormwater fees. Uh, but it doesn't look like the city has the, the, even the, um, in four or five million dollars of excess cash a year, it doesn't look like the city has the money to cover any additional debt either for that project without raising stormwater fees.
Hold on one second. I think if you want to bring up new business, but as far as this particular report, I don't know if this is.
Well, this is a subset of the whole thing. The idea here is that there's an outside party that's looking at all of it and this is just a small subset.
But I mean, they're not looking at the funding side of that. That's.
Yeah.
Can I just get, since he's there, can I just get him to answer the question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And again, I don't mean to intrude, but you, you did ask, uh, can anybody answer the question? Could you restate the question, please?
Start with the name, sir.
Oh, Dennis Raharo, Chief Financial Officer. Good afternoon, council.
So we, we funded seven million dollars in the South Howard project. We're, I'm being told privately that it could be up to a hundred million plus interest.
And I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you said seven million.
We paid seven million for the design phase.
Oh, okay.
So that's allocated already. But then the, the next stage is going to be twenty or thirty million, et cetera. So the, and it appears in looking at the, the, the cash flow, um, out of fifteen or sixteen million, I won't remember the numbers because it's late in the day. Uh, I think eleven million is allocated toward paying the addition, the current debt, um, of which I think we figured out we have about twenty million left over. Um, we're, it doesn't look like we have the cash flow to pay any additional debt for the South Howard project or any of the other, um, additional CIPs that they might prioritize, um, without raising the stormwater fee.
Understood. Understood. What I can state is this, and I, and I hope this answers your question. If it doesn't, please let me know. What I can state is this, we don't anticipate increasing the stormwater improvement assessment fee for anything that's not already in the plan, including South Howard. We, as, uh, as I think council and the public knows, we don't have the guaranteed maximum price for the South Howard project now. The twenty twenty-two price or estimate, excuse me, was about sixty-five million dollars. We have not identified all of the funding for that. But I, but I, what I can tell you is we have no intention nor plans to increase the stormwater service assessment for that project.
Since it's an enterprise fund, it either has to come from existing revenues or debt, which is paid out of existing revenues, or it has to be paid out of increase. But it appears that the, and we, I can make a motion, have you all come back another time. But it appears that there's no cash flow to pay for any additional, um, expenses above that. No.
Agreed. At this time, we do not have that fund. We have a number of potential funding sources, but we don't have certain.
So maybe, maybe you're talking about like a federal grant or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it's not confirmed yet. It's not, nothing is.
Thank you. Again, I just wanted to answer the question.
Hearing nothing else, that would be the completion of item seventy-three. Thank you for your report. We'll look forward to hearing another one in February. Very good. Okay. We're gonna move on to seventy-five. Let's talk mobility fees. And the fun just keeps happening.
I think I'm last.
Uh, no, you're actually second to last.
Second to last. All right. Good evening.
No, we didn't do the charter thing, did we? Did we move that one? No, we didn't. Yeah. We have not yet. No.
All right. Adam Purcell, interim transportation services director. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the multimodal impact fee. Um, and what we hope to accomplish tonight in this discussion is to identify the rate of assessment, uh, that we can move forward into an ordinance, uh, that will then be heard in December. Um, this is our fourth presentation with city council. Uh, we started discussing this with you back in July. Uh, we had two workshops in September and October where we discussed extraordinary circumstances. Um, and following that workshop in October, in the discussion here, we were able to complete our report. Um, and we issued that report or a draft of that report on November sixth. Uh, we submitted it to, to council via email. Uh, we also engaged our stakeholders and sent it to the Tampa Bay Builders Association and other stakeholders via email and posted it to the city website the same day. Uh, so everyone's had at least two weeks to take a look at that report, um, and, and come here today to discuss it. Uh, I wanted to, to discuss one topic that there has been some discussion in the past, that, that city staff was withholding information on the multimodal impact fee, um, and not conveying that effectively to the stakeholder team. Uh, a, a letter specifically noted a meeting on October twenty-eighth, uh, where information was not available. Um, the reason the information was not shared with the stakeholders on the twenty-eighth was because it was not available. Um, we had a draft internal table that we had used for discussion within the city staff. Uh, that city, uh, that information was, was, was known to be, um, not fully updated and required a. and required additional updates. We received those updates on October 29th and then brought that information to council on the 30th. So the progression of those events was that we met, we got additional information, and we presented it to council and the public at the same time. We've actively engaged our stakeholders. We started meeting with stakeholder groups back in July. And it continued that engagement throughout the workshops. And since, we've had additional meetings with the Builders Association and other stakeholders and hope to continue that active engagement. Tonight, we're going to have Catherine Tellez from Fair and Peers come up and walk us through the report that was provided to council and to the public to set us up for the discussion on rate adjustment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Catherine.
Catherine, start with your name, please.
Hello, Catherine Tellez with Fair and Peers. Is the presentation working?
Not yet. CT TV, do you have the presentation for item number 75?
I do have it printed out, but I did two to a page.
Okay, let's just go with that then. Let's do the easiest path.
Didn't want to waste paper.
Okay, if we could get the wolf up on the public monitors.
All right. So as Adam mentioned, we've been before you a few times. So we're just going to do sort of a brief recap on some of the things that we've already talked about for the benefit of people who might be hearing this for the first time. So an impact fee is assessed by local governments on new development to help fund the cost of infrastructure needed to support that development. Fees are typically paid at the time a building permit is issued, and they're designed to offset the financial impact of new development on that public infrastructure. So today, we're only talking about the multimodal impact fee. There are a number of other types of fees that can be assessed, but for today, it's just the multimodal impact fee. And this is a one-time fee that is assessed. So we've talked before about the history of the fee in the city of Tampa and how it was first established in 1989. And then it was most recently updated in 2014 to change it from a roadway impact fee to a multimodal fee. But at that time, the fee schedule itself was not updated. So we're still imposing those 1989 basis rates on new development today. So you all had a copy of the report provided. So we're just going to kind of walk through some of the various different things. So it's organized into six chapters. And then although, I do apologize, the report is a little long itself. We tried to put as much as we could in the technical appendices so that way all the information was there, but we tried to keep that main report pretty succinct. So just kind of go through some of those key items in the report tonight, and then we'll get to the fee tables. So one of the first things that we just wanted to highlight is the demonstrated need study that was prepared that outlined some of the extraordinary circumstances facing the city of Tampa. And if a finding of extraordinary circumstances is made, it would allow the impact fee to be increased beyond the phase-in limitations. So we had those two workshops to discuss those. And so we won't go through all of that again because those are available online if folks wanted to listen to those presentations. So the component of the multimodal fee, at a high level, it's fairly, fairly simple. We're really looking at what's that new demand on the transportation system? Then how much is it to actually build that system? And then we want to avoid double taxation, so there's a credit component to account for gas taxes that are paid. And then we do some math based on trip lengths and other travel characteristics. And we come up with a maximum impact fee. So just because we calculate that as the maximum rate, that does not mean you have to set it at the maximum rate. It just means you cannot set an impact fee rate above that maximum. So for the demand component, it includes a number of different things. So how many trips does a new development generate? And we're looking at multimodal trips. And this multimodal impact fee, the basis of it is a person trip generation calculation. So one of the sources we use to establish sort of the, how many trips was the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which documents travel characteristics from a host of land uses. We then also look at, well, how long are those trips? Because not all trips are the same length, and you might drive much farther for work than you might to go grocery shopping. So we wanted to acknowledge that not all trips have that same length. And then there's other factors that are included too, such as the percent of new trips. And so we wanted to account for some of those trips being a pass-by trip. So for example, for a daycare center, you might have a working parent dropping their child off at daycare on their way to work. Or for a grocery store or shopping center, somebody might be dropping off on their way home from work to pick up some groceries. We then look at the cost component. So this includes a number of different factors. So the design of the infrastructure, if right-of-way is needed, how much it actually costs to construct that facility. So that's your, the labor cost, asphalt, all of those things that go into it. And then we've also included some transit costs as well. And these here, this table here just kind of shows the cost escalation, and all of that's documented in the report. Then there's the question of, well, what can we build? So we went through this list at the last presentation we had. So we made a couple of refinements to the text based on the feedback. But there's a lot of different things that can be built and really based on the legislature. It needs to be a capital improvement, and it needs to have a lifespan of at least five years. So we went through the Tampa Moves report that was put together that has a list of a host of multimodal projects that are planned throughout the city. And so we just wanted to highlight a couple of examples and how the multimodal impact fee could be used to help advance those projects. So the first project example is on North Jefferson Street between Channel Side and Cass Street. And so the project that's identified in Tampa Moves proposes to modify the corridor to provide a separated bike lane, add a turn lane, implement some speed management, add additional crossing treatments. And so these improvements would increase safety for people walking and biking, as well as driving. It would also make walking and biking travel modes more attractive. It would reduce the frequency and severity of collisions with the speed management. And that would decrease the potential for non-recurring congestion that happens when there is those traffic crashes. And that would overall improve the travel time reliability along the corridor. And then coupled with some of the crossing improvements, that would increase overall access to destinations along the corridor. So as more walking and biking trips can be accommodated, those offset the potential capacity decreases for people in a vehicle. And the intersection improvements to add some turn lanes and improve overall traffic signal operations would improve the overall intersection operations and again, increase that travel time reliability along the corridor. So the multimodal impact fee could not pay for the entirety of that project, but it can pay for portions of that project, such as roadway reconstruction to add the separated bike lanes and the associated drainage and utility improvements that might need to happen as a part of that. It could construct the turn lanes and right-of-way acquisition, if any was needed, at any of the corners. And it could also fund the crossing improvements and some of the speed management treatments. The other example we had was in the Interbay District that would add a trail, add some pedestrian crossings, some speed management and signals. So some of the same rationale behind that project, just in terms of adding overall person capacity, adding capacity at the intersection by providing the signal, the speed management, improving overall safety and reliability. And the impact fee revenues could be used to fund the trail, the crossings, speed management treatments, traffic signals, associated drainage and utility relocation, and right-of-way acquisition if that was needed. And then, does the impact fee apply to all land developments equally? No, we already went through this in our last presentation, so we'll just kind of jump ahead to what everybody's waiting for. So as we noted in our last presentation, the overall fee increases, they vary by location. There is no one answer. It's not a one-size-fits-all with factors beyond just construction costs really contributing to how rates have changed. The trip rates and trip length data played a large role in that. So the next few slides will just kind of show where things are landing. So we also updated this to include some comparisons to some of the largest cities in Florida. So this table here shows the current average fee for all districts for sort of the five most common land uses. And then we looked at just construction inflation. So if we just updated the current fee based on construction inflation, what would that fee be? And then we compared it to the average of that maximum fee that we calculated across all of the districts. And then we pulled, as I mentioned before, the fee comparison to a number of different communities. And this one really just focused on the largest ones. So this slide here is showing Jacksonville, Miami-Dade County, which includes Miami, city of Orlando. And so we can see there's kind of a wide variation. Just want to note that the city of Jacksonville actually has 10 different zones, and it's very difficult to come up with a really great comparison there. But they are lower in Jacksonville. And then Miami-Dade County, for the most part, it's a lot higher than the maximum rates that are being calculated here. And then we'd already shared Orlando before, which is kind of in the same, same range. And then we looked at the, sort of the next set of cities. And so with this, we have St. Pete, Port St. Lucie, Cape Coral, and Hialeah. And just want to note that, again, it's kind of all over the place. So some of them are lower, some of them are higher. In St. Pete, they are undergoing an update that was paused. But when that resumes, it is likely that their fee will be increased. The Port St. Lucie fee was last updated in 2021. And that's coming in, you know, slightly lower than the city of Tampa. Cape Coral was established in 2005, and they're currently undergoing an update, and their updated fee schedule is not yet available. And if you happen to be developing in Hialeah, they not only have a city fee that is imposed, they also have a county fee that's imposed. So those two numbers are additive. So as I mentioned, the comparisons are kind of all over the place with each jurisdiction being unique. So let's focus now on what's happening here and just looking at some of the fee districts. So there's six overall fee districts. And don't worry, we're not going to go through each one in copious detail. But we'll just kind of go through a couple of highlights here. So this one is in the Central Business District. And this chart is showing kind of those five most common land uses. It's showing what the current impact fee is, the inflation-adjusted fee, and then the maximum impact fee that was calculated. And then over here on this side, we're showing what that impact fee would be if you do not make a finding of extraordinary circumstances. And the fee increases are limited to no more than 50% of the current fee phased in over four years. So that's what this chart here is showing. And just want to highlight that the fee for office and warehouse, the maximum that we calculated, is actually lower than the current fee based on all the travel characteristics and everything else. So that new lower fee unfortunately would not be phased in over the four years. It would go into effect immediately.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt just very briefly.
Mr. Shelby.
Yes. If you could just state your name again for the record so we could note who the evidence is coming from, if you don't mind.
Catherine Tellez.
Catherine Tellez, and you're from the firm of?
Fair and Peers.
Thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Pesky records.
And then this table here is pretty similar, has a lot of the same information. But this is if you make that finding of extraordinary circumstances with the maximum allowable fee then set at the maximum that we calculated. And then you could see how that might look if that was phased in over a four-year period as well. And then we'll just, we did these for all of the districts, and they're all in the report. And so this is just an example from the Interbay District. So you can kind of see that similar logic there. And then this is what the fee increases could be with that extraordinary circumstances finding. And then again, what that might look like if it was phased in over a four-year period. So wanted to kind of share a couple real-life potential development examples before we wrap up here. So the first example calculation seems like it's a pretty common sort of redevelopment-type scenario where somebody buys an existing home that, you know, maybe, let's just say it's about a 1,200-square-foot home. So that falls into one impact fee rate category. And let's say there's a developer who plans to demolish that home and build a 3,200-square-foot home. So they would get a credit for that existing structure that's on the property. And since there's different fee rates for different-sized homes, they would get one fee credit for that smaller home. And then if they, you know, built that larger home, they would then be imposed the higher fee. But what they would pay would actually just be that net difference. So their overall impact fee in this instance would be about $2,300. And example calculation two, this is sort of an imaginary project in the Central East District. Remember, each district has their own fee schedule. And in this example, it's a vacant lot, and somebody wants to come in and build a 200-unit, six-story apartment building. So there would be no fee credit for that existing use, and they would be assessed $2,802.98 for each of those 200 units. So that would be, you know, a little over a half-million dollars in impact fees that they would be assessed. But, you know, developers, they're smart, and they want to build things that people want to rent or buy. And in this instance, let's just imagine that the city had done all these investments in a multimodal transportation system where the developer didn't think that people would actually lease all of the parking spaces. And so they applied to get a variance and have a parking reduction based on the code. They could reduce that parking supply by about 20%. And if this was parking that is structured parking, then that could actually save them, you know, over $1.5 million if each of those parking spaces cost about $25,000 to build. Again, this is just a hypothetical example. And then the last example calculation we have here is a retail development. So for this one, it's 125,000-square-foot retail center that has a grocery store. That type of development will generate about 12,000 vehicle trips a day. And that rate, the impact fee rate for that, is a little over $31,000 a square foot. So that would equate to almost $4 million. So with that level of fee assessment, the city could construct some traffic signals at adjacent intersections. They could add some turn lanes, and they could add some trails and sidewalks and other things to help people walk and bike and drive to this type of development. So with that, I'll hand it over to.
Adam Purcell, Interim Transportation Services Director, city of Tampa. I wanted to hit a couple key points in Catherine's discussion before we move to the discussion of rate. First, that the action that we're undertaking to modify the impact fee is rate-only. We're not modifying the policy. The policy of what you can do, what projects can be implemented under that program was established in 2014 and has been in place for more than a decade. So we're not changing what it can be used for. What we're changing is how much the developers have to pay into the impact fee as part of their action. Also, we've had a few more discussions and wanted to get some more local examples of what the impact fee can be used for. Here's an example, Cleveland Street at Rome. You can see down in the bottom right-hand corner, that's what it looked like in 2014. You can see down in the bottom right-hand corner, that's what it looked like in 2014. It was a large parking lot with some retail or office space associated with it, and since 2014, there's been a four-story condo built. And now with impact fee funds, what do we anticipate to build at this intersection? But a traffic signal, and that traffic signal is being funded through impact fees. So that's an example of the kind of infrastructure that development's paying for. Also, elsewhere in the city, there's the Green Artery Project. So Green Artery Segment E has been constructed. That project is a much larger project. It cost $1.88 million for Segment E, but about $225,000 of the funding for that project came from impact fees. So we can do a range of things. It's not just green artery-type improvements. It's not just bike-ped-focused. It's traffic signals and bike pit. So there's a range, like Catherine said, there's a range of different activities that can be funded through this. Why now? And why use the extraordinary circumstance and exceed the 50% threshold on this fee? Because if we followed the state statute and we followed the less than 50% of the existing rate, our current impact fees are so low that it would take us nearly 20 years to catch the cost of construction. So it's been 36 years since we increased it last, and if we follow the state statute, it will be 20 more before we catch the cost of the construction. So that's why staff has been looking at this, and that's why we've advanced these kinds of figures. We understand that a sizable increase has the potential to shock development. We heard that this morning in open comment, that there was concern for impact to the development activity within the city. We've had conversations with the home builders where they've expressed those concerns. We've had conversations with council where they've expressed those concerns. We came up with some ideas on how we could help mitigate that. One of them would be a delayed implementation of the program. The state statute says that we can implement it no less than 90 days after the second hearing of the ordinance and adoption, but we can push it out further. Staff would recommend we consider a timeframe of somewhere around six months, delay it until June, and give the development community more time to react to it. We would also suggest that we phase it in, and that's the handout that you just received. We received additional feedback from council that they would like to see some percentage implementation of the fee. And again, I want to make the distinction, the state statute says it's 50% of the existing fee, which in the case of a multifamily in the central business district is $373. So if we did 50% of that fee, that would be the maximum, and we could raise it over four years under the state statute, which would take a very long time to catch up to construction costs. What we're looking at is the maximum fee, and then you can see the lines below, that is, if that maximum fee were implemented at 75% of the maximum fee or 50% of the maximum fee. And then what we would propose is that it be walked in over four years, and these figures show what that annual fee would be if it were walked in over that period. With that, I think we send it to public comment, but then I'm here for question and answer.
No public comment on this one today. One, I want to thank you because I think you've captured exactly what needed to be done here for our conversations. I think a June 1 implementation gives people some time. I think staggering this over four years allows them to adjust their business plan and their business models to appropriately react to this. And as I spoke, just, y'all know because we can't talk about it, I'm also going to, sometime between now and June 1, talk about a carrot approach of maybe reducing these for construction of multifamily on transportation corridors and affordable housing of 80% and AMI and below, so that we have a carrot approach as opposed to a stick as well. But, so, but I mean, for today, I think we need to just move forward on this with this plan of implementation and the delayed till June 1. Go ahead, Councilwoman Herter.
I agree in that, I believe we already have things in the code for affordable housing reductions, do we not?
I would have to look at the Land Development Code. That doesn't really fall within approved view of mobility.
Okay, okay, well then. But, no, I definitely agree with you. I think we need to discuss that. But for me, the thing that hit at home, and if you could put it back on the screen, the image of the apartment complex?
Oh, yeah, 100%. The one at Cleveland?
Yeah. That just did it for me because I know how expensive a traffic signal is. I had no idea. It's like a million dollars.
It's crazy.
It's a million dollars to put a traffic signal here, and we can't do it with $955.
Yeah, I agree. Councilwoman Meteskalko.
You both had mentioned delayed till June.
June 1 implementation. That gives the, that gives the community opportunity, because, you know, they've got projects in play, they've got things going on. It gives them time to adjust their business plan and adjust their models, and then having the stagger buffers the impact of it as well as far as...
Okay, before, before, okay, so you're going to do...
That top line.
The top line of implementing it gradually over the next several years.
Starting in June 1.
But giving them till June to, like you said, recalibrate, reorganize, and...
Yeah, no, I think this is really a good compromise, and I think it's really, I think the development community, I see a good friend of mine sitting there in the back row, I think the development community should be able to adjust to this as well. I think with the delayed entry into June and then having it staggered over four years, and then we, you know, we can look at things between now and June 2, but I think this is a really good, a good leap forward for the City of Tampa.
Yeah, and I'm not going to talk a long time on this, but I was talking, I've talked to a lot of people about this, you know, development community, neighborhood people, and we were comparing this to, like, the tariffs, right? Because there was an initial boom. I specifically, you know, my background, some tariffs, Switzerland, for example, they make watches. In August, it was a 39% implementation, and it just, now it's been reduced to 15. But anyways, that initial shock all at once, I mean, it sends a ripple effect. So in this case, if we do delay it till June, if we implement it over several years, we will be reaching our goals, but we're not, you know, just hitting everybody all at once. So I can understand that. All right.
So what do you need from us? Just acknowledgement that this is the kind of direction we need to go?
Right. The recommendation that it's the first line, so the non-reduced rate over a four-year implementation timeframe, delayed till initiation on June 6. I think that's it. And Councilwoman Young, we had a conversation about wanting to put those carve-outs in, the area or the use exceptions, and that's something that we can work over the next six months as this winds up, that we can get those in place. It can be, it can be figured out in that near-term timeframe.
Subsequent motions. That's what I was talking about as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I'd be interested to know about that, too.
Yeah. Okay. So you want a motion on this? I mean, it's more of a presentation, it's not, what would make, what's good for your comfort level as far as moving this thing forward?
I'll defer to legal.
I'm Gregory, Legal Department. I just wanted to come up here and ask a question because I will be going back to my office this evening and making some changes to the draft ordinance. I mean, if you all are satisfied with the direction that we've been given, that's fine with me because there will certainly be opportunities to vote on what we will come back with at first and second readings. So just to confirm my understanding, we're going to go with the maximum rate as established by the study. Phase it in over four years.
Starting June 1, which is a Monday.
With an effective date of June 1.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shelby.
Would you be able to provide a timeline for first and second readings for the calendar? Just so we, just so we're able to plan.
We can block it out.
December 4th and December 18th.
Well, I think it has, it has to happen.
Okay, so do we, do we, do we need, can we take a motion now?
You could, yeah, well, actually, you could, you could make a motion to have the first reading placed on...
The 4th and the 18th.
Following the direction that you've received.
Okay, I'm willing to hear a motion.
So moved. I mean, put it on December 4th and December 18th.
Well, put it on December 4th, and then we'll be able to set it at that hearing.
Okay, so first reading on December 4th.
Okay, so I have a motion, Councilwoman Herter, second, Councilwoman Meteskalko, those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it, with those understandings. Thank you. Good work on that, really good. Thank you. Mr. Shelby, bring us home.
Yes, I'll make this brief. You have the substitute, substitute, I hate giving...
You're out of time, man.
Basically, basically, it's changing one word in 3B from above to aforementioned, but putting that aside, you have in front of you, pursuant to your direction, from the special call meeting, you've had it for your review, you have the timeline of mile posts, section seven. I will tell you that I've been working with the clerk, and Ms. Lucas Harris can address this, but my understanding is that once this is passed and it becomes official, the online application will be available to your nominees early next week. So that means that they can get started, and I believe, Ms. Lucas Harris, would you be able to notify city council when that goes live? And then also ask them, please, to forward to you the email address of your nominee, and the reason that that is asked is because they need to receive the Form 1 financial disclosure to be able to submit that. Now, what happens is when the application is submitted, it gets forwarded to a background check, and just to let people know, we don't know if, we will find out, it's a yes, no. They either pass the background check or they don't. We don't make inquiries as to why or what is the reason, but you'll have that. Now, I recommend, if you look at the last page for the timeline...
Okay, you got to kill that.
Yeah.
If you look at the page four, actually, December 18th is the date for the adoption of the resolution tentative date, and again, it says the following timeline is subject to change, but if we want to get them up and running and begin planning to have them in January, December 18th is for the adoption of the resolution regarding appointing the members and alternates and designating facilitator and legal counsel. So in order for us to have that resolution prepared, I recommend a deadline for submission by December 11th, a deadline for your nominees to put their names in and have, so that way it allows time for the background check to be done, and it has, in worst-case scenario, if for whatever reason we don't make December 18th, we could move it to the first meeting in January, but I prefer not because we need to get it.
We're going to make it.
I recommend that we have our nominees in by the 5th, December 5th.
We're dependent upon the...
But, I mean, but once you have the...
Well, my plan is to have the board up and going by Monday.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too.
Okay. I know who mine is already, so...
Yeah, me, too. So that would give enough time.
And just, just if you, just for now, to take a look at what happens after everything happens, you'll see there's a deadline for the, for them, the Charter Review Commission to give you the recommendations. The following week, even though the calendar does not go out to September, I'm recommending your initial review. You'll have a week to look at it on your own and then come back for a workshop, and then October 1 would be your approval of that, and then on November 5 of 2026, the first reading. So if this is acceptable to council, your next step is to move this resolution, and let's get the ball rolling.
The substitute resolution.
Substitute resolution.
Yes.
We have a motion for Councilwoman Herter to move the substitute resolution, a second from?
Second.
Second from Councilman Viera. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
We're going to start from this side.
Okay. Well, actually, would you like to talk about the attorney?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if you were going to do that under New Business. Do you want to do it now? That's a good time.
It seems appropriate to talk about it now.
Okay, that's very good. I have done research, I have made inquiries in the, in the local bar, and I brought to the, I brought to the...
Which local bar?
Anchor Bar.
Sorry.
Don't give me any ideas.
Lawyers can't pass a bar.
But, but, but what I did was, I brought a particular attorney to the chair's attention, and his name is Kenneth Tinkler. He is a partner at Carlton Fields, and...
And why is Carlton Fields important? Because they don't have a...
Oh, they don't have a very strong, they don't have much of a relationship at all with the city. And they are not part of the group that is on the list that has job orders with the city attorney's office, and we were able to get a rate that is in line with what the city attorney would pay for a specialty attorney. The chair had had an opportunity to invite him into the office this week, and they spoke. And what we can do, if that would meet with your approval council, is I can forward you his biography after this meeting, and we can invite him to the next regular meeting of city council, where you can actually do what you, you know, have the same interaction that you had with the facilitator, a similar, you know, meet and greet, get to know, ask any questions that you might have. And then what you, if you look at the timeline, again, the timeline for the adoption of the resolution engaging both the facilitator and legal counsel, we'll come back to on the 18th.
Did he pass muster, is that how?
He did. I queried him extensively. He does not live in the city, he doesn't have any interest, so he's not a voter, he doesn't have, he's got extensive experience with government and charters, and so he's a subject matter expert, doesn't live in the city, there's no conflict. I asked about personal relationships with people. He passed the muster with that as well, so he doesn't have, I mean, he knows people but only in passing or casual, not, no...
Because we had an attorney, we had an attorney 20 something years ago say, "I had, I don't have a dog in the fight."
I don't have a dog.
Did you say that? When you came up here, I think you said that.
I did do that.
Well, very similar. I mean, I pretty much grilled him, so you all have that opportunity to go.
And also, if I could just add to that, he has done work with the Charter Review Commission for Hillsborough County when he was an assistant county attorney, and also, he does work with Lee County, Pasco County, I believe, and...
The interesting thing is, again, for this type of subject matter, there's not that many people that have any kind of, like, background or experience of, and we talked a little bit about, you know, the role between himself and the facilitator and how these meetings, what his role is of, and then, of course, incorporating the conversation into legalese language to get this, to get this stuff to the, to us, to us then to go to the ballot.
And also that I have had personal experience with him as a long...
We didn't hold that against him.
Well, which you told him.
Yes.
He is also board-certified, as I am, in city, county, and local government law with the Florida bar, which is why I knew of him for many years.
Okay. So we'll invite him and add him as to that next, I don't think we need a motion for that, I'll just add it under Agenda for Review, we'll just add him to that.
And I will get his bio to the council.
Okay. And I am just totally blanking out, did we just, we did move that substitute resolution, right? So we're at New Business, Councilwoman Meteskalko.
Yes.
Don't get mad. Oh, just want to wish a happy birthday to Kelly Scharf, your legislative aide. I saw that back there, and I know she does a wonderful job, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kelly. Councilwoman Carlson, take us home. Happy birthday to you.
So, funny story, she did, she asked me not to have any desserts for her, but I think after being serenaded by us, I think next year she's going to change her mind.
Yep. But no, happy birthday, Kelly, but more importantly, happy anniversary to my wife. It's on Thanksgiving Day this year, so it's our four-year anniversary.
Congratulations.
Four years of putting up with you.
Yes, she's, she's very patient. So is my legislative aide and several of my friends, so I appreciate it. I'm not the easiest. Thank you very much.
Where's that list? Oh, here it is. Councilwoman Herter.
Thank you. I had just a couple of things I didn't know. Did you want to talk about Hart?
About?
Hart, when?
About, no.
So we just found out today that, thanks to our wonderful Congresswoman Kathy Castor, Hart got $32 million for 33 new buses that are replacing the aging diesel fleet, and we will be the first transit agency in Florida with 100% low emissions CNG fixed route fleet.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
So it's really cool. It's not, unfortunately, anything that can be done like brick and mortar, but it will be able, so we can take that money and not have to replace buses and ideally...
Buses that need to be replaced.
That desperately need to be replaced. It says that they, each bus that they're replacing averages 688,000 miles already ridden, so...
And high maintenance.
And high maintenance. And I believe your aide, Sam, has something also that I think he was going to come up and put up for him. up and, and put up for me.
Are we gonna sing to the Congressman, to thank her?
Sam, are you, you have something to put up, we can go back, we can circle back.
Yeah, um, well, basically, he just wanted to put up, um, today is, uh, or tonight at six-thirty is the transgender day of remembrance and there will be a vigil at, um, Rivercrest Park, he's got it, he's gonna pop it on the wolf for me and so, um, if you, if you have a moment to attend, uh, it is a, it is a wonderful, um, event and it's something that, you know, uh, some of the public comment today talked about, you know, making sure that we, we let folks know that we're paying attention and we care about the things that people care about and this council and board very clearly support, has supported the LGBTQ plus community and so I think that, that even just sharing this and making sure people know about it is, is a, is a, one of our commitments to that transparency and support.
Very good, Councilwoman Young, any new business?
Any new business, any motion, any happy purpose?
You don't, you don't have, you don't have to. No, okay, very good, thank you. Councilman Viera.
Couple of things and thank you, Councilwoman Hurtak for that, I don't know if, and, and Sam, thank you for that, I don't know if I can make it tonight because of a commitment I have to my son, but, but thank you, that's a, obviously a wonderful, um, reminder. Couple of quick things if I may, I wanted to, y'all had gotten a memo on, we all know, and I wish Charlie Miranda was here for this, uh, but Tony Garcia, who had worked with our planning commission, his late father, who was an amazing man, um, did, um, uh, almost think it was thirty years as the head of the USO here and was a wonderful veteran advocate and just a great West Tampa leader, I motion for staff to return with a presentation regarding a request for a street renaming to honor the late Tony Garcia Junior, to return on January twenty-second, a meeting with a staff presentation, the memorandum and corresponding documents were sent some time ago, um, about a month ago, so that's.
Second.
And I wish, again, Charlie was here for them.
You're talking about Tony's dad.
Oh, yeah, not Tony, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, sit down with Tony and the stories are unbelievable with it and the pictures, the proof, so, yeah, second, absolutely, and he did, ask anybody, anybody knows, he was always doing something in the community, good.
Sixty-eight? Okay, we're good, okay. Councilwoman Hurtak, you had a question?
I just want a quick question for the clerk, so, uh, we, I made a motion a while ago for a placeholder for the proposed ordinance on raising the multimodal transportation fee, can I now take that off the agenda and have it just replaced by the, they're bringing a motion forward, so, so we went ahead and made a placeholder so that there would be a spot? Can I, can I now just take that off? So I motion. Okay, well, I, I'll just go ahead and remove that placeholder for the multimodal transportation fee.
We have a motion.
For both December fourth and eighteenth because it's, they're coming as ordinances and not staff reports.
We have a motion for Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from. Councilman Maniscalco, those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Councilman Viera, something else, anything?
Oh, yeah, no, but we do need Tony's Garcia.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Viera, second, I'm sorry, a motion from Councilman, I didn't realize it was a motion in there, we have a motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Maniscalco on the, uh, motion, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it, thank you.
And really quick, every year I always invite the Jewish Community Center Federation to come on International Holocaust Remembrance Day, I so motion for January twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-six.
We have a motion for Councilman Viera, second from. Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
And then lastly, um, Morris Lopez, the late Morris Lopez, he was a Tampa Police Department officer who had given all in nineteen forty-nine, was on Seventh and Sixteenth Street, Paul Guzzo did a wonderful story on him, um, and it, it was in Ebor City and I had requested, it's a long story, we already voted on this, for, um, TPD to be working on a marker, they're going back and forth on it, but I've kind of potentially have something, um, for a, um, gosh, long, long week, it's a, um, oh, Lord, a plaque, a plaque to be put there, so this is my motion for, for, because I think it's important, that's an area where people go to a party and all that stuff and I'd love, love for them to see that, you know, a, a man who was with Tampa Police Department gave everything and also saved the life of a newspaper boy there, it's a, it's an amazing story, so I want a written staff report on that on December eighteenth and, and then if I'm not satisfied by said written staff report, which I'm sure I will be, a placeholder for January eighth of two thousand and twenty-six, um, so again, the written staff report I'm sure will be fine, um, but just in case, uh, because I, I'm only here for another year and I wanna make sure to do this, uh, Mr. Lopez who was here, I, I promised him I'd do that some time ago.
We have a motion for Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously, thank you.
I, I was asked as well for Fire Station Twenty-four report to be heard first under staff reports on December eighteenth to accommodate the project manager coming from out of town, I was requested by them for that.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Viera, second from Councilwoman Hurtak, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously, thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Young?
Um, I just wanted to share, I, um, I've been going to a lot of different events and things, um, within a district, which has been really awesome, um, because it's, you know, you think you know the district and then you go out and you learn even more and you meet a lot of people and, um, one event that I had an opportunity to go to, it was called, it was in a Sofa Springs, um, and it was called, uh, Eight-One-Three Stop the Violence by, um, someone, her, well, on, you know, she's known as Trinidad or her name is LaShawn, um, but we had, um, she had an event, um, at the George Bartholomew Center and it was amazing, um, you know, to hear some of the stories of some of the, um, moms and, and dads, um, that had lost their, um, children or loved ones to gun violence, um, but just thinking overall, um, I had made a post, um, I posted something on, um, my social media about just, you know, the motion that we, I made about, um, even, um, having the report for our next, um, council meeting and at the end I had posted something that I just wanted to read and it says, "Our community has experienced some very tragic recent losses that have left families in pain many of us cannot even imagine, please let us remember to be sensitive to that and continue to keep those families in our thoughts and prayers as we navigate their healing, times like this remind us how vital empathy and compassion are not just in our policymaking, but in how we show up for one another each day" and I think that's important, um, there is a lot of things that are happening, um, but I will echo the sentiments of, um, Ms., uh, Councilman Hurtak, you know, that we are up here and we see and we hear, um, and we talk to a lot of people, um, and we're, we're hearing you and we're listening and we're doing the best that we can, so I just wanted to make those sentiments.
Thank you, thank you, very, very well said. Councilman Viera.
It's not a motion, actually, it's CRA.
I promised everybody to get everybody out at six o'clock.
Oh, we will, this is one minute.
We have twelve minutes.
Or, I do wanna say this because I can't say this in front of folks, when I, um, became CRA chairperson, I'd indicated that once we get a District Five person, I would allow, not allow, that's not the right word, I would be a minimal to him or her whenever they're ready, um, taking over as chairperson, so Councilwoman, um, Young, I just say that, that whenever you feel ready, please during CRA let me know, I do not care, so, you know, I do not care, so whenever you're ready, just let it be known, if you so wish, you don't have to say yes or no, just let me know, thank you.
Councilman Carlson.
Shoot, I'm tired.
I know we have things, we talked about it.
Uh, a couple of things real fast, um, I've been asked by the public to get a, a written update, so I'd make it on the constructions fee study and the land development fee study, so I'd like just to make a motion to get a written update, written report, update on the construction fee study and land development fee study, um, since the written report, could we do December eighteenth?
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco for the December eighteenth meeting for the written reports on the two items, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
And then, um, I, I'd like to have a, you all recommended a workshop, I think, I, I don't know if we can do January or February, whatever, but I, I'd like to have a, a discussion at a workshop about, um, uh, converting the convention center to an enterprise fund and/or reporting the costs and expenses in a unified way.
We're looking for a date.
I think January's too soon to have that kind of discussion.
February's pretty booked.
Yeah, and we don't have one in March. I mean, April's probably what they're gonna tell you is a good time for them anyway.
Okay, April.
So, April twenty-third, there's nothing on that.
We have, we have a motion for that workshop agenda on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-six, we have a second from Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously, thank you.
Last thing, as they're turning off the lights, um, uh, we, I've asked several, this is, uh, Councilmember Young's district, but I've had several, it affects my district because Harbor Island is here, um, it, I've had several times you all have allowed us to have staff come before us to talk about the traffic jams in downtown. On Friday night, I went to an event at the addition and it took me an hour to get from the, from inside downtown to, inside the parking lot of the addition, it took me an hour to get out of downtown and the reason is that they're shutting down roads, um, you, you pull out of the addition, you turn left, it's hard to get on there and they shut down the road, they won't let you back on the cellmate and, and, you know, Vic Beatty, when he was here, he said publicly and privately, if they would just stop shutting down the roads and let the lights work, everything would work, I really would like to pass an ordinance that prohibits them from shutting down the roads, but instead, what I'd like to do is, is maybe ask them to come one more time, so I'd like to make a motion to have city staff come before us as soon as possible to tell us how they can prevent the traffic jams in downtown. It's, it's completely debilitating, there were several events, it, the traffic again backed up all the way to Rome and, and.
I can't second this, but I would second this wholeheartedly because I, I observed the same thing, okay, okay, good. I second that with, with two thumbs up, absolutely.
I don't know, we don't have a date until the New Year.
Okay, what, what do you, um, the fifth, fifth of February?
January, I mean, there's, there's, there's room in January. January eighth has room.
January eighth.
Okay, we have a motion from Council, oh, no, sorry, you're, you're.
Thank you, there's a, there's a motion from Councilmember Carlson, there's a second from, uh, for our Chair Clendenin, any more conversation about this?
I, what I do is I park here and I walk there and I avoid it, but I understand for the general public.
Well, and they have to come north, so they would have to come this way anyway.
The problem is you expect the roads to be open a certain way, so you get in line and you drive that way and then they turn you a different way.
They force you out into, they force you into worse traffic.
They even force you, uh, but near the arena, I mean, it's idiotic what's happening and I, I don't understand why they, why they do it and we have a shortage of police officers, I, if, anyway, we'll talk about it then.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
I have it.
Mr. Shelby, you'd like to delay our departure further?
Yes, for your health, for your health and well-being.
Okay.
Um, just, uh, Councilman Viera and, uh, to get back to his discussion about the CRA, um, I've had an opportunity to talk with, um, Cliff Shepard, your CRA attorney, uh, and looking at your bylaws and, uh, just to let you know that it is city council that makes the appointment.
Yes.
Not the CRA and in the interests, and in the interests of transparency and notice, I would ask that it not be done under new business, that it be at a, um, an agenda item when the time should come.
When the time comes.
That we're able to be able to put it on the agenda to give the public the opportunity to know about it in advance and, uh, and comment on it if they wish.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, this, you're gonna, this is the right thing to do, may I just, for thirty seconds?
Councilman Viera.
Uh, yeah, I, I forgot to say this, that if y'all know Rich Reedy, who was, uh, Commissioner Ken Hagan's aide, he passed on and so just our sincere condolences to him and his family, I remember he was a, um, member of Ottawa Baptist, if I recall, and he was always a nice guy and like, he was, he was a pro, you know, he really was and so just to Commissioner Hagan and everybody in the county and, uh, and Mr. Reedy's, uh, family, just my, my condolences.
And clerk, are we done with our full agenda, we're all good, you checked off all the boxes, we have a motion to receive and file for Councilman Maniscalco, a second from, Councilman Viera, all those in favor say aye? Aye, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, we are adjourned, I'm gonna go sign those documents because if I don't do it now.
This is Riverwalk, then I think Mayor Martinez ushered in the idea of real redevelopment along the river. The, he could, the convention center could have gone anywhere, he chose that to redevelop the downtown to be a catalyst. It wasn't until Mayor Greco that the idea came that, okay, Marriott, you wanna come and be a hotel, you've gotta build this sidewalk out here that we're gonna call the Riverwalk and then Mayor Greco bought Coatenchoby, part, the land that Coatenchoby parks on and again, we're gonna put this sidewalk in this and we're gonna call this the Riverwalk. So we decided that it was time that the Riverwalk came to fruition and that we connected in a way that also connected the various assets, uh, within our city. So we said, you know, you know when your end date is as mayor and said, "Look, one thing is really important to me is that, uh, one, that we have the master plan that we can hand off to future mayors and two, that we have that entire stretch from Channel Side to the Straz Center permitted with the Army Corps of Engineer, particularly that one area at the Curtis Sixon Waterfront Park that went off past the Sheraton." I said, "That way, if money ever comes, it'll be permitted." Well, sure enough, that's exactly what happened because when Mayor Buckhorn was in office, um, and they had the stimulus money.